Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to roll and we're late, sorry about that. Okay, the July 1st, 2015 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2, our closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002, and some customers of Cox Communications who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. Council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 p.m., excuse me, 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection and suppression sprinkler system. If the alarm should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exit to the back of the chambers out to the medicine room. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or a fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to our city clerk up front. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or the rears of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please come forward and see our city clerk staff. And if you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for our invocation given this morning by Pastor Cross Row. Alici, is that the way it's pronounced? Will you correct it for me?
It's close enough, yes.
No. The "close enough" is good in dancing and horseshoes. Would you come forward and pronounce your name, please?
It's Casro Alici.
That was pretty close.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, from the Evangelical Friends Church, and then please, everyone, remain standing for a pledge of allegiance, and then we'll have our ceremonials. Anyway, my gratitude to you and my apologies.
Thank you, thank you, and good morning to you, Mayor, City Councilman. I read from Chronicle 29, 10 through 13. David praised the Lord in the presence of the whole assembly, saying, "Praise be to you, Lord, the God of our Father Israel, for everlasting to everlasting. Yours, Lord, is the greatness and the power and the glory and the majesty and the splendor, for everything in heaven and earth is yours. Yours, Lord, is the kingdom; you are exalted as the head over all. Wealth and honor comes from you; you are the ruler of all things. In your hands are strength and power to exalt and give strength to all. Now, our God, we give you thanks and praise your glorious name, our Father. We ask that you be present in this day in our assembly. Let this house be the house where wisdom and justice flows. Indow our mayor and city council members with heavenly wisdom and cover them with your righteousness, and through them bless our community, our citizens." Amen. You are.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I'm really focused on Mr. Art this morning. Dowries. I don't know if they still have them. Ms. Fretwell, I know, has the flu and may not be in, but I know you have to have long employment. Four girls, four daughters. The baby is Grace Noel, weighing in at eight pounds, fifteen ounces. Thank you, Vanessa. Yeah, we just congratulate you, it's wonderful. Keep working and earning. Good morning. Okay, here we go. I would like to invite Tim Sacco, who's Assistant General Manager of the Regional Flood Control District, to join us at the podium. As you all know, here he is. Good morning. I'm humid, I am telling you. We're all sticking to each other because of the humidity. Anyway, Tim is the Assistant General Manager of the Regional Flood Control District to join us. And July is Flash Flood Awareness Month, and we want to take this opportunity to remind everyone in the community about the dangers of flash flooding. Surely, here in Las Vegas, we experienced it often. We saw firsthand how the dangers of Mother Nature happen when we experience heavy thunderstorms, which we know we had this morning. Because of the Carpenter One burn area among Charleston a couple of summers ago, the Kyle Canyon Detention Basin caught enough water to fill the length of a football field at a height taller than the stratosphere. Unbelievable. As the water drained from the basin, it had to run onto Grand Teton, turning the roadway into a flowing river. The city moved rapidly to fast-track needed improvements on Grand Teton to ensure that floodwaters are kept off the roadways and routed into underground storm drains. We're happy to report that the final phase of that construction has just been completed. But this example shows how dangerous floodwaters can be and how observant we must be. So I want to present a proclamation to Tim, which makes July Flash Flood Awareness Month, and thank him and his team for all the work they're doing to keep us safe, which I will ask first from Tim some comments, and then I'm going to read the proclamation because I think the information's so important, unless you cover it all, which you probably will in your comments.
Thank you, your honored members of the council. Our message is simple: Floods kill. Stay aware, stay away, stay alive. Simple enough.
Right. And even if you're in a suburban or a truck and you think you can go across, do not go there.
That's correct.
Because now there is a new law passed by the legislature. Not only do we hope you survive if you are... How do I say it without using a word that my grandchildren will hit me?
Stupid driver law.
Oh, that's all right, stupid driver... Well, they say, "Don't say stupid," it's not a good word. All right, stupid driver law, you will pay. You will pay and reimburse for any rescue that has to take place, but sometimes you don't make it to that stage. So stay away from flooding and flash floodwaters. So, then I'm going to read this. Whereas the Regional Flood Control District strives to improve the protection of life and property for existing residents, future residents, and visitors from the impacts of flooding in Clark County through a flood-safety awareness campaign, and whereas more than one-half of all flood-related deaths are a result of people attempting to drive through flooded areas, and whereas currently ninety detention basins and five hundred and ninety-six miles of channels and underground storm drains, of which one hundred and twenty-nine miles are natural washes, have been built to manage the flood risks in southern Nevada, and whereas another thirty-one detention basins and two hundred and ten miles of conveyance remain to be built... Oh, we're getting... And we hopefully have the money. Whereas each of these projects makes another area of the community safer from floods, and whereas it's critically important to educate us, the public, about flood hazard, the potential for flash flooding, and how best to protect ourselves in floods. And whereas flash floods may occur in any month of the year, and summer rains in July through September have the greatest potential to create these flash floods in Clark County, now therefore I, the mayor of the City of Las Vegas County, Clark State, and Nevada, hereby proudly proclaim the month of July 2015 as Flash Flood Awareness Month in the City of Las Vegas, and ask all citizens to become aware of their environment and the dangers of flooding. And so we give this to you, and we thank you for everything you've been doing and continue to do. And if you could just do something about the temperature and the humidity, we'd really appreciate it.
I'm having a bad hair day myself.
Did you hear that? He said he's having a bad hair day too. But thanks, Tim, so much. We're just so thrilled that you're taking care of us all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pardon? Groove shot.
Always. The councilwoman? You don't want to be in this picture, councilwoman. Okay.
Tweeting out, way to go.
Thank you very much.
But Aaron, of course, Aaron Neff, who's really... Pardon? Okay, for our next item, Mayor Pro Tem Ross is going to remind us about a very important issue that affects us all.
You am.
I am.
You have it here? Mayor Pro Tem?
No, that's me, but...
No, no, nope, we're waiting on there.
Okay. Yeah, this is awesome, thank you, Mayor. You know, Mayor and Council, I think we're the only city in America that celebrates monsoon season. Honestly, we put billboards up, we get proclamations out, we talk about it a lot, and it's important for our citizens to recognize that. And Mayor, you talked about Grand Teton and those projects out in Centennial Hills, they are complete, and we're very happy about that. Before I move on to this one, I have a... I want to bring down a young lady. Her name is Brianna Ortega. Where is she? Come down here, young lady. Bring your poster with you. I have the pleasure of being on the Board of Directors for Nevada Childseekers, and it's been a great pleasure to do that. And she's coming down. Sonia, would you come down? Sonia Lucero, come on down here as well with her. Brianna, where's your parents? Where's your parents? Let's get your... You guys, can you guys come down too, or do you want to take pictures? What do you want to do? Come on down here too. Are these your brothers and sisters? Can they come down too? Are you okay with that? All of you come down here, because I bet you she didn't do this on her own. This is in recognition of the Nevada Childseekers poster contest, and Brianna, you happen to be the winner. Is this your poster here? Can you hold that up for everybody to see? Hold that up for everybody to see that poster. Do you have one too, Dad? Is that another one? Very cool. The Center for Missing and Exploited Children sponsors a poster contest every year for students on the theme of returning missing children. Kids from all fifty states participate in this, and it is an honor for us today to recognize eleven-year-old Brianna, and she is from Red Rock Elementary School. And Councilwoman, I believe that's in your ward, so she's one of your students in your ward, and she happens to be the winner. Nevada Childseekers has made the contest possible in Las Vegas for over thirty years. At this time, Sonia, would you say a few words about this great event and this contest? Because I think it's important that we help the citizens of our city understand what it means.
Every year, Nevada Childseekers, we host the poster contest for fifth graders. So it's always open to every fifth grader in our school district, and we try to create awareness on a missing child. So what it is, is we've... She has a little story that comes with her artwork, and we try to invite the kids to tell us what a missing children means to them. What does it mean to them? How can they create awareness themselves to other children about becoming home and being missing? So it's a really important message. We try to teach safety to our community, stranger danger, and, you know, online safety, because we see that a lot often. And we're very happy that she brought this wonderful contest to us, and we'll let her talk a little bit about what her poster means. And Nevada Childseekers this year will be thirty years that we've been serving the community, and yeah, that's what Nevada Childseekers...
Thank you, Sonia. This is very important work that these folks do, and it's great to get the kids involved as well, so they're aware of what's going on in our community. Brianna, I want you to tell us about your poster and why you did it, and tell us the story behind it. You ready for that?
Well, why did I make it?
Just tell us about the poster. Why did you make that poster?
I made this poster because I just wanted to bring the missing children home.
Do you want to bring those kids home that are missing? Is that important to you?
Yeah.
Now, your whole family's here. Use that microphone. Now, your whole family's here too, Brianna. So did they have some effect on helping you put this poster together?
Yes.
What do you plan on doing after this, now that you're the poster contest winner? What are you going to do about helping bring more children home?
I don't know, I might volunteer to do something.
That would be awesome, volunteer to do something. And you know what? I would encourage anyone else who wants to volunteer, because Sonia and her team don't do this by themselves. This is a community effort, and when we... When a child goes missing, everybody jumps into action. And we need you to do the same thing, you and your friends to do the same thing, and your family, because this is a great community we live in, and the last thing we want is any of our children to disappear or go missing. So congratulations, I have something for you as well. Mayor, right behind you there?
Yes.
A goodie bag?
Yes.
Here's a goodie bag. That's just a bonus.
And this?
And that's the best part. Here's the best part. And this is a proclamation just for you. It is an honor and privilege for the mayor and the city council of Las Vegas to recognize those individuals who contribute to the betterment of our community. You're one of those people, young lady. Brianna Ortega has furthered the mission of bringing home missing children through art, and Nevada Childseekers organization works to encourage children to be safe online and offer support to families of missing children everywhere. We, the mayor, and the city council of Las Vegas do hereby recognize you, July 1st, as this day as the winner of the Nevada Childseekers 2015 poster contest. Congratulations, young lady. That's for you.
What's in the bag?
I... Just some City of Las Vegas bling. Some bling bling. Yes, you got some City of Las Vegas bling bling in there, young lady. I did not, Mayor. I think you should give it to her. A good luck mayor chip.
Good luck, good health, and we'll give one to Dad, or is this your brother?
[laughing]
What? You are her dad. He would be her brother. And who's over here?
You got more over there, Mayor. You got more down the line there.
Who do we have over here? Sister? Younger sister or older sister? Older. How old are you and what's your name? Oh.
How old are you and what's your name?
I'm Perla, I'm fourteen.
Uh-oh. You help out all the time. Here's a good luck mayor chip. And you are?
I am the mother.
No, you aren't. Yes, you absolutely do. We will not ask you how old you are, but thank you for this wonderful talent. There's a good luck mayor chip. And you?
Stepdad.
Stepdad. And there are bookends right here. These are beautiful. And what's your name, sir?
Damien.
Damien.
And you?
Daniel.
Daniel. How old are you, Daniel?
Twelve.
So you are in sixth grade?
Seven.
You're advanced. You should be in sixth grade. Good luck, hair chip. And one for you too. And we're so proud of the family. It's wonderful, congratulations. And wait, we've got... Councilman Ross always has something extra to add. Hold on.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you guys, because, you know, as a community, we don't do this by ourselves. We need great people in this community, like your daughter, and you should be very proud. Sonia, I want you to talk to everybody real quick about how they can get involved and participate in Nevada Childseekers along with the rest of us.
Nevada Childseekers, we're always looking for volunteers, so if you fill out our application online, because we do background checks, and we have events all summer, back-to-school events. We have a link on our website that you could click on and sign up, and we do fingerprint events, we do trainings where you could come and do some of our online safety classes. A lot of different things come help us in the office. We're always busy, we're always looking for people, we're looking for board members, we're looking for everything, so... Our website is www.nevadachildseekers.org. 702-458-7009.
Awesome, thank you. Give them a round of applause. Give them a round of applause, thank you. Thank you, Brianna. Oh, let's get a picture. Can we get a picture with you guys?
We can move over to them. If you turn sideways, everybody, I think we...
Come, come in the picture. This is Brianna's teacher.
Oh, yeah, I heard you turn.
Yeah, everybody get in here. Unless you have a pole, get closer. You have a pole, go somewhere else. On three. One, two, three.
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you, our gentlemen. Is the poster up somewhere?
I don't know.
I think leave you one. I'll leave you one. But where physically... Don't they used to put the posters up on a billboard? No more?
No. No, I don't think it was a billboard.
We need to do that next time.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? So give a call. Councilman Ross. Yeah, they used to do billboards. So we'll get somebody. They used to. All right, for our next item, which happens to be our final item this morning, Councilman Barlow's going to recognize efforts of a local citizen who's been really supportive of many community events. Please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. What great ceremonial items we have today, and I have the privilege of recognizing a business owner, not only in Ward 5, but in Ward 3 as well, and just an overall great citizen and business owner in the City of Las Vegas. I would like to take this time to recognize a businessman here in our community who has made great contributions to multiple of my Ward 5 events, and that is none other than Mr. Jimmy Shashani. So let's give him a round of applause as he comes. And we're going to make this a family affair, Jimmy, if you don't mind, so I'm going to ask your wife and your kids to come forward. Now, I understand that your mom is here as well. You all come forward, because this is a family affair, because I know how much family means to Jimmy, so I want you all to come and stand and support him in the event that he faints. No. Absolutely. Come on up, he has such beautiful children. Jimmy Shashani, ladies and gentlemen, just to give you a backdrop, was born in Detroit, Michigan, on January 22nd, 1982. Jimmy is the son of... I want to say this right. Is it Saban?
Sabah.
Sabah. The son of Sabah, Shashani, and Waylett?
Yep.
And Waylett. He has two brothers, Nick and Sean. He is the husband to Brisa? Did I say that right? Okay. To Brisa, and father to Brianna and Mason. Look at the two beautiful young kids. Beautiful, beautiful. The Shashanis relocated to Las Vegas from San Diego in 1994. Their first local business was a Quick Stop convenience store located on Lake Mead. Jimmy and his brothers learned the family business by assisting in daily operations. The Shashanis purchased Bell's Market located on 8th Street in April 2004. Jimmy dedicated his time to the market and worked with the City of Las Vegas to turn the struggling market into a successful, profitable business in its first year. The family business continued to grow when Jimmy and his brother, Nick, purchased the Mighty Mart on Oki. The store was renamed to Bell's Market Number Two, and it too was a profitable success in its first year. Jimmy had a vision to open a grocery store that would cater to the diverse downtown community business clientele. His vision came into fruition with the purchase of White Cross Drugs near downtown. How many of us remember White Cross Drugs? Right? Of course. Which opened in July 2013. The market features a wide variety of imported wines, cheeses, and full-service gourmet sandwich... A full-service gourmet sandwich counter. Jimmy was led to a new venture after being inspired by his love for cooking and an episode on TV, on the TV show called Shark Tank. And I had an opportunity to visit this exciting new venture of his as well. The ventures led to the purchase of a franchise food truck called Cousins Maine Lobster, which opened in March of 2015. Jimmy has been a faithful member of the business community, partnering with me for the annual Ward 5 Back-to-School Fair, Barlow Bingos, and a host of other events throughout Ward 5. And today, ladies and gentlemen, for his philanthropic effort and not only being a businessman, but also giving back to the community, the seniors as well as the youth in the community, I thought it was... It would be very honorable to have him stand before the City of Las Vegas and the council during this ceremonial to recognize him and his family for giving back to this community that they now call home and having the opportunity to raise their children right here in the City of Las Vegas. So therefore, whereas Jimmy Shashani is recognized for his benevolence and contribution to the residents of our great city, his willingness and generous spirit to collaborate with the City of Las Vegas reaches many, and his tireless efforts deserve great accolades. And now, therefore, we, the mayor, members of the Las Vegas City Council, urge the entire Las Vegas community to join with us as we do hereby proudly proclaim July 1st, 2015, Jimmy Shashani Day in the City of Las Vegas.
Way to go. Boy, you've done a lot. You really have. It's wonderful.
So Jimmy, I'm going to give you the microphone and just share a few words with us in regards to how you feel right now and all of the... And what does the future hold for you and your family moving forward here in the business community? Thank you.
Thank you to the mayor and the city council for this honor. It's amazing, great feeling. Been in Vegas for most of my life, since I was twelve years old, and it's an honor to be recognized for something like this. Want to thank my parents. My dad couldn't make it today because he's still putting in hard work, like he's always been all our lives, to give us a good life, and we're able to take over the reins now and expand our family, our family business, and my mom and my dad for instilling the hard-work ethics into our family and into our... Into the way we were raised, and my wife now for being my backbone and my support. My children, my kids, the joy of my life every day. Can't wait to get home and see them after work, and it's an honor, and don't know what[1669.91] support. My children, my kids, the joy of my life every day. Can't wait to get home and see them after work. And it's an honor. And don't know what else to say other than I'm very, very honored. So the food truck is, it's called Cousins Maine Lobster. It started and ended in Los Angeles in 2012. And the founders of our company were able to be featured on Shark Tank, where they got an investment from Shark, Barbara Corcoran. And since then, it's been soaring to unbelievable amounts of success. We're now in 10 cities across the nation with 14 trucks, serving 10 different cities across the nation. We serve all Maine lobster dishes, lobster rolls, like Maine-style lobster rolls, Connecticut-style lobster rolls.
I'm getting hungry.
Yeah, lobster tacos, lobster bisque, everything lobster, everything you can think of lobster, we do it on the truck.
Now, is this moving around? What's its path? How do you?
Yeah, we're, so we're all over town. Our schedule is posted every week. Every Monday morning, it's posted for the week on our website, cousinsmainlobster.com. And we go out, throughout the city, we focus on corporate lunches. We do a lot of office buildings and serve, do two, three-hour lunch services for the office, for the staff. And of course, special events. We just did the Rockin' Rio event in May, which was a great success, great event. And look forward to doing many, many more. Hopefully, I could see all you guys at our truck. Thank you so much.
Jimmy, what we'll have to do is invite you to park the truck out front on a council day.
Yeah.
That way, we can all go out and have lunch at the truck. So we'll figure out how to coordinate that. But once again, congratulations, and thank you so very much for all that you do for this community. Congratulations to you and your entire family. Thank you.
Do you want to take a picture?
We're going to take a group shot.
over whatever they have to do. So five-minute break, and we'll be ready for our council nine. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speakers allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items, and if anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We'll set the time at one minute. Do we have any cards? No cards either. Good morning.
Let me get to number 10. I'll pull it forward.
Okay. Good morning.
Hi. Morning. My name is Brian McMullin, 9,400 Players Canyon Court. I don't represent anybody other than myself. I just would like to seek some clarity, and I'm not sure if this is the proper forum, but I refer to number 23 on your agenda.
Okay.
Which is, and not because of 23, it could be any what I would deem to be slot parlor that may be granted permission. I'm not for or against it. I just want clarity. My thing is that when I entered this, I've been in the gaming business since 1968. Not in this town, but I've been here since 1997. I finished in the gaming business, so to speak, in 2000. I wanted to start my own business. I said to my lawyer, who's a respected gaming attorney, who used to work for me, I said, "I want to open a 15-machine place. I quite like the idea, but I don't want to have a restaurant or anything like that. I just want the 15 machines." He said, "Brian, you can't do that. You've got to give something back." And in the law, and he referred me to a regulation which contained the word incidental.
Okay.
And he said, "Gaming can't, that's only be incidental to the rest of your business."
What I'm going to do, McCallum, is that joke?
McMullin.
McMullin. If you would stay around, I think our meeting is going to move rapidly. I will allow you to speak when 23 comes up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Okay, we'll move on to agenda item. Pardon? Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
I want to speak on item number 23 as well. I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay, and your name, please.
Oh, I apologize. Todd Vice, Legal Counsel for the Nevada Resort Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Danny Thompson, I'd like to speak on item number 23 as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to agenda item number 10. For possible action, any items the council staff and/or applicant wishes to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Mayor, I would like to pull forward agenda item 15 for discussion off the consent agenda, as well as agenda item 23 off the consent agenda. And then, staff has requested that agenda item 13, fiscal year 2016 budget for the city's nonprofit 495 main corporation be stricken from the agenda. Agenda item 38, the annual review of city manager Betsy Elizabeth Fretwell obeyed to the August 5 meeting, as requested by you, Mayor, as well as agenda item 39, annual review of city attorney Brad Ferjerbik obeyed to the August 5 meeting. And the agenda item 40, annual review of city auditor Radford Snelding obeyed to the August 5 meeting. Councilman Barlow has requested that agenda item 41 be obeyed, oh, I'm sorry, an advanced item, Councilman Barlow has requested that advance item 41 be stricken from the agenda. And also, Mayor, you have requested that agenda item 65 be obeyed to the August 5 meeting as well. That is my motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. That carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Barlow, I see you have a guest. And not Mr. Barlow, Mr. Gerbik.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that.
Your guest is Bob Coffin.
We're often confused.
Brad, Brad, hold on one second. The mayor said I had a guest. Mayor, I want to correct it. I have a pest. He's, for three meetings in a row, his feet has been in my lap. And he's been asking me for a foot massage, and I'd be darned if I do it.
All right.
So, no, it's not a guest. It's a pest.
I'm sorry. Mr. Gerbik, please.
Thank you, Councilman, for the information. The mayor with me today is Felicia Kaufman, who is graduating from high school this semester and wishes to attend college at Georgetown and go on to law school. And she's also fortunate to have her mother Laura, who is an aide in your office. And I'm pleased to have her with me for the rest of the summer. So I'd like to introduce Felicia.
Lovely.
4.7 weighted GPA.
Okay, well, you're going to hear about this. What's your GPA?
I have a 4.7 weighted GPA and a 3.9 unweighted GPA.
Pretty darn good. And what do you do in your spare time? What are your electives?
I participate in speech and debate really extensively. I'm in mock trial and National Honor Society.
Sort of awesome. And preference in speech and debate, do you prefer?
I prefer debate a lot. I do pretty much all types of debate. We have a really great program here in Nevada.
And is it Lincoln Douglas you prefer, or, yes?
Lincoln Douglas is the best type of debate, because it's one-on-one. So I get to learn a lot about moral issues.
Oh, we're going to call upon you. Thank you. Welcome. Way to go. Okay, agenda item 11. Possible action to approve the minutes by reference of the May 19, 2015 Special Joint City Council Redevelopment Agency Budget Meeting. Is there a motion to approve them?
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve those minutes. Please vote and please post. Okay. Agenda items 12 through 32 minus, what were the two, 15 and 23, which we will take separately, on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Is there any item the council wishes brought forward beyond 15 and 23? Okay.
With that, Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda minus agenda items 15 and 23.
Thank you very much.
And 13 was stricken.
13 was stricken.
13 was stricken. Okay, thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote.
Thanks, Lady.
Please post. And of course, I do those things to say. It's so exciting for you to keep tabs on what I'm doing. Okay, so let's move on now to agenda item, and that carries. Let's move on to agenda item 15. And that is for possible action to approve the modification and clarification agreement between City Parkway 5, Inc. and Citra Symphony LLC, Citra, formerly Citra Real Estate Capital LLC, for parcel L located 394 South City Parkway and Symphony Park. This is in Ward Five, with Councilman Barlow.
Good morning, Mayor Gibbon. Members of council, for the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. With me today is Michael Saltzman, Principal of Citra. This item before you is an amendment to our existing development agreement. Our development agreement originated in November of 2013. On May 6 of this year, the city council approved an extension of time of certain milestones regarding the schedule performance. We're back before you with a second amendment to essentially extend a milestone by 30 days for closing escrow on the land and also closing financing on New Market tax codes. I want to walk you through briefly the transaction, explain a little bit about the timing and why this 30-day extension is needed, and then I'll turn it over to Michael to discuss the project. Yes, Mayor?
And could you point to where on the map that's in front of us? Where is that parcel? Where's that?
Certainly. And so this is a graphical depiction, and using this map, I realize it's not an aerial, but essentially, all the colors here that you see eliminated, the shading, is parcel L in Symphony Park.
Oh.
And so you see, this is essentially the freight train that's for Union Pacific Rail Line. And then you see in the gray there at the top of the screen, Smith Center. So this is immediately east, or you can think of if you're entering Symphony Park and the Smith Center, behind the Smith Center campus. You see there to the west and to the south, or the southwest is the Cleveland Clinic Campus, where the Cleveland Clinic LaRueville Center for Brain Health is. And Cleveland Clinic has ambitions to expand not only the Center for Brain Health, but their physical presence in Symphony Park and in downtown Las Vegas. And so this was really part of the vision for Symphony Park, to have medical and academic center of excellence in Symphony Park. The project here has a lot of components, so I want to walk you through the components and then explain in simple terms the graphic. The project is a mixed-use facility, which will contain a medical office building component, medical office space, which you see here acronym MOB. There is a skilled nursing facility component, which you see with the acronym SNF. And then there's an assisted living and independent living component, which you see here as AL and IL. And then finally, there's a parking structure, a structured parking garage to serve the project. Our project contemplated construction phasing, given the size and scope of the project and the configuration of the site. And so our agreement allows our partner to build two different construction phases. The first construction phase here is going to be highlighted in the red, which is the assisted living and independent living, together with the parking garage. What our amendment allows is essentially a two-step process. This allows the deadline for close on the land, their purchase of land from us, to extend from July 1 to July 31, simply a 30-day extension. And with that, close on financing from New Market And with that, close on financing from new market tax credits. We had a very productive meeting yesterday with two of the lenders on the project, US Bank, as well as DPG Investments out of Scottsdale, and they're gonna be two of the lenders that are helping with the new market tax credit financing, and we're working hard towards closing that financing and supporting our partner closing that financing by the end of July. With that, there'll be a second closing on a larger construction loan, essentially three months after. There's a deadline, extended that deadline to, forgive me, closing on the construction financing by November second of two thousand and fifteen. And that will essentially be the larger construction loan, which will support the funding, together with the new markets, for the assisted living and the parking structure. Thereafter, there'll be a second construction phase for the medical office and the skilled nursing facility, and that financing closing will be in March of two thousand and sixteen, with the construction start April fourth of two thousand and sixteen. So, it sounds like a long time away, but really, the timing between the construction start for the first phase and the second phase is only less than a six-month period. So, it's gonna happen close in succession, and it's gonna be the same partners at the table to finance that as well. Those dates are laid out in the scheduled performance in exhibit A to the agreement. It's in your backup. I also have a second slide, if you'd like to see it up on the screen for reference.
Please.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Michael to talk about, big picture, about the project and what this means for Symphony Park and his timing moving forward.
Great, thank you, Bill. As Bill said, Michael Saltzman, Citra, happy to be back in front of you now with a lot more of the pieces come together so that we can actually see this project move forward. It's a, as Bill points out, he's getting just to a few of the complexities of this project, but working with the city, with Bill and his staff and with the city manager, I think that we've really come to a good place as far as looking at the whole schedule and making it logistically work. And I think that's mainly what this amendment is about, is about, okay, let's look at the project, let's look at the schedule, let's line up the financing pieces, and how does that all work in succession? And I think we're very excited and happy to have, be able to lay this out in a way that really works from both sides, meeting all the requirements. I guess, I'm mainly here to answer questions. I think, you know, we briefed you on the project before, but I think just as an overview, the project does have a number of real benefits to the city and to the redevelopment area. As Bill pointed out, it has both a residential component, which is the assisted living and independent living, so that really serves as a, as a spark, we believe, for the residential goals of the Symphony Park neighborhood. And then, on the other side, you have the skilled nursing and the medical office, which is more of a medical-oriented use. That would really serve as a link to the Cleveland Clinic and the expansion of the medical district on that side. Those pieces together, for us, within the project, that forms a continuum of care that is really geared towards helping seniors. So, this is a really, a project that not only has economic benefit as far as really solid jobs and economic growth here, but it also serves a social need of helping seniors and giving seniors a place to get care, get medical treatment, and have a place to live in a downtown setting where they'll have the conveniences and lifestyle of being able to go to Smith Center, come to the other downtown uses, and that's a real amenity and, I think, advantage for folks, and it's a big trend. I think people are looking to be part of a downtown living environment. So, that's the basic overview. I'm happy to answer any questions about any aspect of the project, the financing, the logistics.
I'm sure we do have some questions. First of all, I'm delighted to know that after these couple of years that we're getting closer, I have two right up front. The first one is probably simple. How close are you to fully funding phase one?
Well, we're, it's thirty-first, that's, that's, well, yeah, the thirty-first is when the first closing of the financing happens. In order to do that closing, we had, we have to have a commitment on all the financing for phase one. So, really, all the financing for phase one's committed. There's a timing gap, as Bill pointed out, between that initial closing, where we'll start actual site work, and then we'll go to vertical construction when we close the construction loan about three months later. And there's some logistics to that, just again, and timing that's driving that schedule. But we have to have that commitment now in order to, in order to move ahead.
My second question, and I'm gonna open it up, is obviously, you know, from looking at the whole of Symphony Park, we have the magnificent Ruvo Center, the magnificent Smith Center, the World Market, all architectural statements of uniqueness, and so, it would be hopeful that as you go forward, and maybe you already have the design element, but it does not be a straight box that sits there, in that this beautiful place, which will continue to demand something that is very special for that entire Symphony Park.
Absolutely, yeah. No, well, thank you for asking. We've really emphasized a design of this project from day one. I mean, it's certainly part of the, clearly, clear part of the objectives and the requirements of the district, and we've adhered to those. We hired a nationally renowned architect that is a specialist in both healthcare and urban mixed-use development, and that group has designed the buildings. Actually, all the boards are up in Bill's office, and it's, I think, you know, the way you have to look at this project in the context of the neighborhood, is it certainly is a beautiful design. We're not trying to, though, I think, compete with Smith Center and LaRuevo. I think those buildings are the signature buildings within the district. Our buildings would be more of a backdrop to those buildings, so we tried to take cues from certainly the Smith Center, because we're directly adjacent to that as far as the materials of the building and the relationship of the uses to that building, and so, we're really trying to create is, building that's respectful of that, and that then picks up on, I think, the type of activity that we want to see happen, so the street life. So, we've really put a lot of emphasis on the, on the ground floor, on the look of the ground floor, making it a real lively place with outdoor seating, and so, we have on that ground floor also, right on the corner, a restaurant space that really is certainly an amenity for our building, but is really an amenity for Smith Center and the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm hopeful that you will bring those back to us before, you know, everything's totally finalized, so we can see how they blend in. And the World Market Center, we have heard more compliments about that five-building look over the years, as much as anything else, that it is unique, it makes a statement, while it's subtle as well. So, just hopefully, it's just not gonna look like a box and a building, but has some character to it, which is in keeping. And as well, the garage, which all of us who work in this building and the hotels can see from the backside what the garage is gonna look like as well. So, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, mayor. I'm not convinced yet that this will be harmonious with its surroundings, and since the beginning, and I think it's about three years ago we first heard about this, I raised the issue about how important it was to protect the view, the visual surroundings of the Smith Center, because it truly is an icon of our city, not just the Symphony Park. And I was told in those days that, yes, we'll be sure to be very careful, particularly toward the front, where the bell tower is. And though later on, that changed, because you were told that you had to surrender some real estate for, because of the residential component, that you had to be farther away from the railroad tracks. I can buy that, I understand, that limited your real estate, which means you have to go higher. But when I was told you have to go higher, and you would be going high toward the front, where the tower is, I get nervous, because I know you say you want to be a backdrop, or you're gonna be background. You can't be if you're as high as that tower, and you can't be if you're boxy and square, and I'm not saying you go back to somebody's thirties version of what architecture should be, but to be harmonious, you really have to try hard to take your elevation to the other end of the property as opposed to that part. And I haven't seen, really, anything to convince me that you have really given us anything other than lip service, that you're going to pay attention to your surroundings.
Right.
What are you gonna show us, what you want to do?
Well, I mean, I would love to have, I mean, I don't think our architects would actually, I mean, me saying it's a backdrop building, I don't think our architects would say that. Architects have taken an enormous amount of pride in the design of this project, and I think what would be a great thing for us to be able to bring in our team and give you a full presentation of what the thinking is and what the drivers are of the design.
Well, where you have AL and IL, assisted and independent, and you have the parking structure for a train buffer zone, so, that's fine, but how high is that parking structure going to be? They're not, they're not paragons of beauty, so, I mean, I'd rather see it a little higher or closer to Bonneville, you know what I mean?
Well, actually...
The left?
The diagram is a diagram, so, one thing that I would have to point out is that the parking structure doesn't extend the entire rear of the building. The AL and IL is actually, would be oriented...
What you call the rear, I'm sorry. Let's use the railroad right away.
The rear, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's the rear of the front door, but you're right, it's, this is a four-sided project. Every side has to look good. We certainly recognize that. So, the parking structure doesn't go quite as long as that, but let me just point out what really drove the orientation of the buildings first. We initially had a little bit of a different design for the parking structure and where, and I think you brought it up, where we oriented the uses, and when we went in and met with the fire department and went through all the requirements, and this has also been sparked a lot by the freight train accidents that have been happening, you know, around the country, it has really spooked, I think, all the fire department officials, and so, that was a really big driver of us reorienting the project by putting the parking structure as a buffer between the train tracks and the other uses. And then, of course, as much as possible, just from a, you know, that relates to that is you don't want residential folks living as far as possible from that train track as well. So, that's where this orientation came about. And it put a lot of limitations on what we could lay out. It is a very, you know, these are tight urban sites, and in order to make them work, it's tricky to get all the different components. But that said, I think, again, I think what we've tried to do is really adhere as close as possible to the design guidelines and the vision that was laid out in the master plan and the redevelopment. And so, what that means is attention to materials, attention to breaking up the facades, attention to the street activity, and really a comprehensive design approach.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Because I know you mean well here, but the master plan was done long before the Smith Center was constructed, and things happen, things change. We need to adapt to change as you do. So, all I am suggesting, in order to get my support, is to make sure that the elevation, the heights of the elevations that are on the north end of this property...
Right.
...are de-emphasized, so that you could go higher on the south end and just absolutely have my blessing, but of course, I'm just one vote here, but I believe there's a lot of community interest in this issue. I know there is. And so, the question becomes, why should we fight over architecture? I don't want to. I mean, it's like, we could use you there, and I like the idea, and it works perfectly with the medical complement.
Right.
But they are spending a lot of money over there at the Cleveland on architecture. They've got Frank Gehry, I think, lined up for their expansion. So, and his stuff's crazy, so it stands on its own, but so does the Smith Center. Let's just make sure it's not some box...
Absolutely.
...sitting right next to it and too high on the north end. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I want to assure you that we're very excited about this. It's been a long time, and I know you've been really, you know, you've had some mountains to climb here, so it's really exciting, and understand this, because as far away from the railroad tracks as we live, which is probably a mile, the noise, and to have your residents in assisted living or permanently there, terrible. So, that helps, that is a buffer for noise, most importantly, too. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, mayor. I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item, subject to all conditions.
Okay, there's a motion to approve on agenda item fifteen. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
We'll look forward to it. Thank you. Okay, now we are pulling forward agenda item number twenty-three, abeyance item for possible action to approve restricted gaming license Nevada Restaurant Services, Inc., DB, at Dottie's one-one-zero at ten thousand West Sahara Avenue, Suite one hundred, Councilman Beers, Ward Two. And so, Councilman, I'm gonna turn it over to staff first, with your permission, okay? Please, okay.
Thank you, your honor. For the record, Karen Dodelson, Deputy Director of Planning, and with me is Mary McElhan or Business Licensing Section Manager. This item is before you today for consideration of a permanent license. The current temporary that was issued by the city council expires August twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen. It was issued for three months. There is one additional temporary that could be extended at this point in time for up to six months. Glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Let's get all the presentation first, so, and then we'll start with the questions. Yes, ma'am, and please introduce, well, who's going first?
Sure, I will. I'm Susan Johnson, General Counsel for Nevada Restaurant Services, and my co-counsel...
Randall Jones, Kemp Jones &amp; Coathart at thirty-eight-hundred Howard Hughes Parkway. Also, we have some binders we'd like to give to the council and the city attorney, and also the clerks, for the record.
Thank you. They're given then...
We may be referring to some documents, so that you'll have an opportunity to glance at them.
So, if you'll hold off just for one moment...
Yes.
Let's get those to the council, if we can. Counsel woman? Okay. Please, Ms. Johnson, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to make this first part of it simple, and we will then hopefully have an opportunity to respond to any critics or opposition later, but let's just look at where we're at on this particular application. It's store one-ten out on West Sahara at Walapie. On July eighth of fourteen, which is almost exactly a year ago, this commission, this council, approved a special use permit for this tavern, and every single member who sits here today unanimously approved that special use permit a year ago. We then began our construction. In November of fourteen, we received approvals by the State Gaming Commission and the State Gaming Control Board to approve our tavern use in this location. We then came to you in February, at which time we received all of the other licenses that we need, and they're in that notebook. There's permanent restaurant license, permanent alcohol, certificate of occupancy, which is very critical, and a temporary gaming, which, as you know from the past, your temporary gamings are issued just in order to allow it to get onto the next council agenda for approval, but it's generally very routine, and I'm not aware of any circumstances right offhand where you have not granted a permanent gaming license once the temporary has been issued. So, based on all of those approvals, over the course of a year, we opened on March ninth. We've been open now for almost four months. We have employees, we have people with benefits, we have an ongoing operation that suddenly came to a screeching halt when Stations Casino decided that we were perhaps too close to their Red Rock Casino. I think it's important to note that this has always been on the consent agenda. Ms. Dodelson and her staff have made the record that we meet all your criteria, we meet all the criteria that the city has ever applied to any other company, any other tavern, historically, and the only issue that has kind of come out is an attempt to analyze a form that we submit to the state for state gaming. Now, this is something you've never done with any other company or any other tavern, which is to take a form that's not your own, that's the state's, and that the state has for forty-seven years dealt with the issues on that form, and they know how to calculate, they know what they're looking for, it's discretionary, there are seven criteria, they, you know, they know what they're looking at, and suddenly, the city decided on this Dottie's, that they would pull this out, they would look at it on their own... would pull this out, they would look at it on their own, without input from the state, and that they would then hold us back, uh, on any permanent license, which is, of course, applying criteria that don't exist for anyone else and is a clear violation of equal protection, uh, in reliance upon everything that you have approved over the course of this past year, we spent seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just on tenant improvements, on our interiors, on our kitchens, on our bar, on our machines, uh, on our, you know, food and beverage in, inventory, we're a bar, we have eighty-seven, we have eighty-seven kinds of liquor in every location, most of you have had the opportunity to come and visit our, um, our sample Dottie's that's in our corporate office, and, and you can see, we offer, we are a tavern, I mean, we offer as much liquor as any other tavern that you're going to find in the city, uh, so there's never been a question at the state level as to whether we're a tavern, um, in addition to that seven-twenty-five, we're committed to a ten-year lease, and just the first, just the first year of that lease is going to be another three hundred thousand dollars, so just for this first year, you know, we've got our, our, uh, seven-twenty-five, and we've got just a year of lease, of lease interest, so we're looking at a, at a million dollar investment, which is pretty substantial, because you have to realize that a lot of taverns that open are funded by slot rod operators, you know, who want to help them get open, or we've seen some that have leased, uh, their kitchens out to for another party, you know, they're not taking responsibility, we, we build our own kitchens, you know, we, we cook, we, we do everything, we meet all the state criteria, um, it's, it's pretty easy to have someone, especially lobbyists, kind of slink around the chambers and spread rumors, and that, that's politics, that's been happening to you all week, right up till probably this morning, um, but what I need you to know, I need you to know that this company, in its twenty years of history, from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and fifteen, and it started in the city, our first, um, location, has never once, by any jurisdiction in the state of Nevada or locale, has never been denied, has never been found unsuitable, has never been disciplined, has never been fined, has never even been called forward for discipline or for any kind of non-compliance, ever, so whatever you're being told is most likely untrue, because if we had been non-compliant, those entities and those jurisdictions would have done something, certainly, and they haven't, because we follow the rules, and if the rules change, we change, you know, we change to meet them, um, if you were to follow this, what I'm anticipating, this discussion, and we'll talk later, about, uh, instituting a revenue test, about how much gaming revenue is necessary to prove a primary business, um, you'll find that you are the only jurisdiction in the state of Nevada that's done that, if you've been led to believe that the county's done it, or that Henderson has done it, or that the state has done it, they've not, the closest that happened was the most recent change in the county, in which they decided they wanted all fifteen machines in a bar, but they gave you the choice, if you don't want to have all fifteen machines in a bar, they allow you to alternatively meet a fifty-fifty revenue split, or use, or just go down to seven machines, but it's the choice of the licensee, it's not mandatory, uh, the city of Henderson, when they made changes, their changes had to do with kitchens and with how many restaurant seats and how many workers, they imposed no revenue test, so you, you'd be unique, and, and I'll tell you, there's a history on this issue that does go back about forty-seven years, um, I, I've looked through transcripts over the course of, uh, the last five years, and I can bring in, I can bring in this much paperwork, where this whole incidental, what is primary, has been hassled and discussed through the, um, State Gaming Control Board, the State Gaming Commission, the state legislature, state, you know, legislative committees, subcommittees, um, it started, it was added in nineteen sixty-nine, that language, and just off the top of my head, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-nine, two thousand and two, two thousand and five, two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, all this, all of those, at all of those times, some jurisdiction, generally the state, were going through this struggle with what's incidental and what's primary, but what they never did, because they knew it would close too many taverns, is they never imposed a, a fifty-fifty revenue test, and there's a great, so if you're going to study this issue, which you have every right to do, study it, you know, you don't just take a, uh, an applicant who's already built a tavern, and it's just already hired its employees, already been up and running for four months, and then say, oh gee, I think we're going to just hold this up, and now we're going to study this issue that goes back through, ev, every notable gaming attorney and, um, in this town, um, alive and dead, has had input on this issue, and, uh, it's not going to be a fun project, but it is a project, and there's a, and there's a method to do it, and that's through an ordinance change, and I would hope that, um, that your city attorney would agree, that if you want to change your approach and how you look at things, you do it through, um, an ordinance change, study committees, that's what the county did, they didn't take an applicant mid-stream and say, oh gee, we're just going to stop you while we study this, they did it the right way, you know, they instituted study committees, hearings, and, uh, and ordinance changes, um, had public hearings, state did it, uh, the, the gaming control board did it, the gaming commission did it, the city of Henderson did it when they made their changes, and the county did it, and that's the way, you want to do things right, I mean, uh, this, this council doesn't want to, um, hang itself out and try to make a fast decision on a subject that, like I said, there's a lot of history on this, you know, forty-seven years of history, that even beats how long I've been here, um, so I think that it's very important that you, um, that you understand that, and, and, and the real issue here is, you know, this turkey is cooked, you, it's open, you know, like I said, employees have been hired, it's been open for four months, and it's all been done based upon your approvals, you turned on the oven, you turned on the oven, all we did was, you know, pull it out, cooked, you can't now try to uncook it, go on, go forward, go forward, and look at your ordinances and, and make a determination if you want to make changes, and if you like or don't like what you have now, but this particular project is done, I mean, it, it, like I said, it, it's cooked, you have over a hundred and twenty-five other taverns in the city, you have ongoing applications in the city, are you going to now hold all of them while you try to study the, um, forms that were created by the state, by the state gaming, our premier, you know, in the world, gaming commission, and have been interpreted by the state, uh, through dozens and dozens of years, they know what they're looking for, um, it's, it's, you know, what, with all due respect to Councilman Beers, you took, you took the form that the state uses, and one that has never been used by the city for any other company or against any other company, and then you went through it and you tried to analyze it the way you, you know, best understood it to be, um, and the answers, and, and you wrote a letter to the, um, gaming control board essentially saying that you think that we misrepresented our, um, what we told them, and that the state perhaps made a mistake, and that the state should look at this again, and, and I'm just going to, um, suggest to you, I don't think that was really well received, um, what, what we received in response, that letter was written to them on May fifth, if you look at tab fifteen, it's the last tab in your little book, the state sent me, the most they wanted to get involved in this was, they just sent me a letter that says, please accept this letter as confirmation that Nevada Restaurant Services, including its owners and key executives, are currently licensed and in good standing with the Nevada State Gaming Control Board, and, uh, you know, it's copied to all the board members, and I happen to know that the gaming, the chairman of the gaming commission, um, was also, um, decisive in, in that response, so there's your response, you know, they're saying, I'm not getting in this politics, they're saying, we approved them, they're in good standing with us, and in fact, um, I was looking through some transcripts the other day and noticed, um, yeah, in January of two thousand and fourteen, we were licensing a Perump location, and during the cause, you know, the discussion, uh, Mr. Ives said, you have every right at any time to come in and review our information, and this was to Chairman A.G. Burnett, and he said, thank you for that, for the record, Dottie's has been one of the most compliant companies we have had, and he has repeated that on numerous occasions, in numerous hearings, but that's just one that, um, that I've pulled up, um, because I happened to notice it, but that's, that's, that's our standing, no, we're, if somebody's running around, and I like to say, um, slithering around, telling you that we're non-compliant and everything, not true, not true, no jurisdiction has ever found that to be the case, so, so we've got, you know, those issues to, um, to consider, and then, you know, we've talked about you making changes, if you want to make changes, there's a way to do it, and it's, you know, to go forward on a proactive basis, um, I'd like to also, I know that there, that one big issue, um, with, um, Councilman Beers, uh, was taking a, some numbers, some audit numbers that they took from our store when it was first opened, and this ninety-one percent gaming has been, you know, um, flaunted about as though, you know, to prove that we're something other than a tavern, well, just for the heck of it, we looked at another week, which was the week of May twenty-fifth of this month, so just a few weeks later, and in that case, our gaming revenues were down, we were in the red, fourteen thousand dollars, because of some jackpots that had been hit, so that's, so that meant that every dollar, a hundred percent of our revenues were food and beverage, not one percent was a gaming revenue, that's why you can't pull these numbers out of, um, short periods, that's why the gaming control board allows you to lump them together, um, and get an average over a period of a year, and that gives you a better idea, you can't just take this or take that, um, because they vary, they fluctuate so, so much, so, um, I, I think those were the key things that I wanted to, um, to get in, I know, uh, I know, to Commissioner Tarkanian, I know you're very respectful of each, of, um, respecting each other councilperson's ward decisions in their own ward, but I, I submit to you that that decision was a, a land use decision, back when the special use permit was approved a year ago, um, which, again, all due respect, Commissioner Beers voted for, um, now, what, we're not dealing with a ward issue, we're dealing with a business license issue that affects the entire structure of your, of the licensing integrity of the city, you know, to take and stop a company that's already been allowed to open and has met every single criteria, so the last thing that, you know, I would love to say this at the very end, but knowing how these hearings go, I don't know when that chance might be, so I have one last, um, one last thing, Peter Bernhard was a very respected chairman of the gaming, uh, Nevada Gaming Commission over a long period, I want to even say maybe ten years, um, highly respected, and when he was testifying, again, on the same issue, you know, like I told you, if you want to get into this, man, it's, it's going to be big and it's going to be lengthy, he said this, at a interim legislative committee, "I submit my perspective that there has been a very effective campaign led by one particular non-restricted licensee, which has been very loud, very persistent in presenting what I believe is very misleading data, just because you happen to see them," and he's talking about Dottie's and Joni's, "more than you saw them before, understand that you see them because people with a competitive interest have brought them to everyone's attention, there is no proliferation of locations, the machines have not increased over time, there's no proliferation," he says, "I was severely concerned and offended when I learned that throughout the time and many, many hours that I was spending, that the legislature was spending, that the commission at county level was spending, that there had been an attempt to buy Dottie's locations by Stations." Initially, that was denied when it was reported in the press, I confronted Mr. Sloan with this, "If any governmental official used his or her position in a government to put pressure on Dottie's and devalue its operations so that Station, a private entity, could acquire it at a lower price, that is, in my mind, the most serious ethical violation one can imagine, I'm offended if in fact Stations went on a campaign to try to discredit Dottie's and its business model, to pursue its own personal financial interest in acquiring it, then we, as public officials, cannot let that happen." I, no one can say it better than Peter said it, and, um, that's where you are today, I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can kind of keep going, and I'm sure there'll be things-
Thank you, okay, and, uh, Mr. Jones, did you, um, want to add to this, and if you please announce yourself as well for the record.
Briefly, again, Randall Jones, Kemp Jones and Co., thirty-eight-hundred Howard Hughes Parkway, I don't have a whole lot to add, I wanted to primarily address, uh, the letter that Mr. Bice had provided to you all the last time you were here on this matter, and address some of the points he's made, I, I, uh, Mr. Bice and I know each other a long time, Mr. Bice is a very good lawyer- Mr. Bice is a very good lawyer, but I felt it was important, and I've been dealing with Mr. Bice and he's been dealing with me on these Dottie's related issues with, first with the county, and then with the city of Henderson, and now with the city. And so I, I wanted to make a couple of comments with respect to his letter. And one of the points I want to make to you all is that he indicates, as I understand his letter, that this is a matter that you all, as a, as a council, can simply clarify the language in your own ordinance of whether this is, this licensee is, what their primary business is or what is incidental to their primary business and those kind of things. You can simply take the language you already have and just clarify it at a meeting as a means by which you can deny this permanent license. And, and a couple of points I want to make out, make to you is, first of all, in the examples that Mr. Bice gives in his letter, every one of those examples, and they are the county and then later on in Henderson, those government bodies went through the procedure, whether we agreed or disagreed with what they ultimately concluded, they still went through the procedure. So it's interesting to note in his letter, he says, the county changed the, the rules and the city of Henderson changed the rules. And, but how did they do that? They did that by an amendment. And, and, and what they didn't do is what he suggests, and he refers to a case called Castillo. By the way, I know your city attorney pretty well too, and, and I have to tell you, I have great respect for his abilities as a lawyer. And I'm certainly happy to say, let your own city attorney read the Castillo case and tell you what he thinks it means. Because I will submit to you, it doesn't mean anything like what Mr. Bice suggests it means, that you can, in a council meeting, without public notice, without giving the constituents an opportunity to hear this issue in a democratic society and look at it and vet it and follow your own ordinances, which require you to do certain things with public notice, before you can change a statute, before you can change the meaning, the fundamental meaning of a statute or an ordinance that you've been following repeatedly as recently as when you approved this license preliminarily, that you have to actually have an amendment that is properly noticed and vetted under, again, Nevada state law, statutory law, and your own ordinances. I think it's section 2.10 is, is, is one of the sections as, as an example, that you'd need to follow. So all we're asking you to do is follow the rules that you've set for yourself, that you live by and say, look, you can't clarify. Castillo actually involved the amendment of a statute involving criminal law. And so in that, even the case that Mr. Bice cites, even though there's some language in there that suggests you can clarify in the, in midstream, I don't believe that case stands for that proposition at all. If you want to do this, then do it in a way that is fair to all participants, by giving everybody fair notice. Don't do it in an unequal way. A way that where, as I understand it, last time we were before you, my client was before you, you had two other matters on the consent agenda with temporary licenses that got approved. They were not subjected to the special scrutiny that's being suggested that Dottie's go through here. They were not being given unequal treatment with a different test that, by the way, doesn't exist in your ordinance. There is no definition of primary business. There is no definition of incidental. And that's why these other government bodies have relied upon the state to do their job. That's why they have essentially said repeatedly, this company is compliant with the law. They are not illegal, as has been suggested by Dottie's competitors. And in fact, I, I would ask you all to think about this. When you all gave them temporary licensure, these same issues were before you and you all found that their license was appropriate. So what has changed between when they came before you for the temporary license and now? The only thing that has changed, because as I understand it, your vote was unanimous when that license came before you before, as have many others that you have approved every single time with respect to Dottie's. So what has changed? The only thing that has changed is the competitors have now come and lobbied you very hard to do the same thing they've done in the county and in Henderson, but the difference is, and Dottie's has even said this, look, don't change the rules on us midstream. If you're going to do this, do it pursuant to the law. Have your hearings. Find out what your constituents really feel as a group, not as, as, we obviously have a bias here, but so do our competitors. Let your community tell you if this is really an issue that you need to worry about. Don't worry about it unless there's a real issue. And there certainly wasn't when you, when you dealt with their temporary license. And again, the only difference between then and now is that the competitors have come in and lobbied you hard to change, to try to change your minds. All we're asking for is the same treatment that you have given to every other applicant in the same situation. We don't want this to be a situation where, where one party doesn't, next time it might not be Dottie's. Don't treat Dottie's differently than you've treated everybody else. That's not fair. That's not what this council is about. And we're asking you to simply say, look, in this case, you've met the criteria of Dottie's. Your own staff has told you that. There is nothing that can be pointed to by anyone in your ordinances that says that my client is not in compliance with the law. The state of Nevada has now told you again, in Tab 15, from the chairman of the Gaming Control Board, they're in compliance with the law. So if you want to do something different in the future, that is something you are absolutely entitled and that's your job, if you feel it's appropriate and necessary. Just don't change the rules on anybody in midstream. That's all we're asking you to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you both. What I'm going to do now, since Mr. McCollum and Todd Bice and Mr. Thompson have all requested in our short duration, so there, you'll have an opportunity to speak after, and ask you to come and open this up for public comment, restricting everybody to five minutes. So let's start with Brian McCollum. If you would, come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you both. And again, to restate your name, even though I said it, please.
Thank you very much.
Five minutes, please.
I'll start again. Brian McMullin, 9400 Players Canyon Court. I'm not here to rail against Dottie's or Molly's or any what I consider to be a slot parlor. When I first went from the gaming business into the tavern business, I spoke to my lawyer. I said, what do I need to do? I want 15 machines. I want to retire. He said, I just want 15 machines. He said to me, but Brian, you can't do that. I said, and why? He said, he referred me to a regulation which spoke about incidental and it spoke about primary. And I don't know, I've heard, and the lady who was up here, the lawyer, was fantastic. I thought she made a very convincing argument about most things, but I'm sure she could do it if she was in opposition as well. My thing is, I don't need a definition for primary. Everybody up there, everybody in this room knows what primary means. Does it have to be defined? Incidental. You've all filled out your, what is it, when you have to get your petty cash and your, your expenses, you talk about your incidentals. Your incidentals aren't your hotel room at the Bellagio. They're the coffee that you had, well, maybe not at Starbucks, but somewhere else. They are incidental. Now, I'm not, and I'm not a lawyer. What I'm trying to get is clarity. Having been involved and having been on boards of public companies, I, I wouldn't invest in what Dottie's investing is because there's no clarity. It says incidental. It says primary. I know what their primary business is. I would like to be in their business. It's primary. It's gaming. Nothing else. To talk about, and that's where I felt the argument fell away, about one month when we lost some money, well, we take it over a year. It'll be over 90% the primary business, which is gaming. Hey, maybe it'll be 85%. I don't know, but it's certainly not my business. I've had to, in order to get that, I asked my lawyer, what have you got to do? He said, you have the restaurant, whatever you have to do, but it can't be your primary business. So we've taken the trouble to invest of my own money. I didn't borrow any money. And by the way, I don't represent anybody here other than myself wanting to know clarity. And I'm sure public companies out there would not invest in this business because of the lack of clarity, whether it's from this council or whether it's from the gaming board. But to me, there is clarity. Incidental means incidental. Primary means primary. So I can't invest my money in your town here anymore because of this. And by the way, I don't consider Dottie's a competitor of mine. If you changed every tavern to be a slot alley, it would be to my advantage at the moment because people do want food and beverage. And I don't buy the argument about 87 different liquors or offerings makes you a tavern. People have to buy the stuff to make you a tavern. I think when you're in a, in a town, in a city or whatever, you have to contribute. Slot alleys, which they are, don't contribute. Do they have employment? Yes. Do the businesses they buy from have more employment than they had before they went in there? Yes. Of course, if they open a new one, they do have employment. But what is the, the sales tax, which I collect on the county's behalf or the state's behalf? I mean, that's a huge sum of money that I have to put back into, which comes back into the community. I think I probably do about $180,000 a year. The, the, in just one tavern, I spend about $350,000 on food and $350,000 on beverage. That's a contribution. That's employment to those particular companies. I don't really think I have to carry on anymore about it. I think you all took English at school. I took English at school. We all understand what primary and incidental is. I don't wish to be rude, but obvious, it makes, it's so obvious to me. And I can't invest money in a slot parlor, which I would like to, by the way, when there's this thing hanging over. And I don't think any self-respecting or law-abiding public company would invest in it with this hanging over. To say that you've already been granted it and it's been going on for several years and it's been granted and this council has gone, doesn't make it legal.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCollum.
That's it, really. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming back forward and waiting. Okay, I think next was Mr. Bice, Todd Bice.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Todd Bice, Pizanelli Bice, I'm here on behalf of the Nevada Resort Association. Let me start with a, the following sort of observation. When someone sets up a false boogeyman for you, it's the old Wizard of Oz defense for lawyers. You set up this false boogeyman so that you're hoping that no one will pay attention to what is the substance behind the curtain. And that's what Dottie's just did for you. They told you that they're the victims of Station Casinos and that's all that this is about. I'm here on behalf of the Nevada Resort Association, which is, its members are probably the largest employers in the state of Nevada. Boyd Gaming is also, also a member. Boyd Gaming is also here. Golden Gaming, again, one of the largest tavern operators in the state of Nevada, probably the largest, also represented here. So let's stop pretending what this is about and let's focus on, let's peel back the curtain on the Wizard of Oz defense and let's see why we have an issue here. Mr. Jones says, no, nothing has changed since they got their initial approvals. Well, what's changed is, is that the truth has come out. That's what has changed. The truth has finally come out about what they are really doing. And you heard the defense that they're now trying to set up, which is what they've tried to do in the county and in Henderson. And I'll talk to you about Henderson just a little bit because what was represented to you is not remotely what happened. They try to set up the defense of, well, you've already given us approvals, so you just have to continue to perpetuate this. First of all, they represented how you all voted for this special use permit? At least from our gathering, our, our look at the records, I think this just went to the planning commission. I don't know that anybody appealed it. I don't know that it ever made its way to you. But that's what they do. Dottie's comes in and tries to tell you, you've already approved this, so, so you have to continue to let us do it once you find out what the true set of facts are. There's no law anywhere that does that, anywhere. That's like one of these massage operators who gets an approval from you and then they turn around and start doing inappropriate things at these facilities and then say, well, you approved us. You just have to allow us to continue on like this. There is no law that does that. So I want to make sure that we interject some things into the record specifically. I have my letter that I sent to Mr. Gerbick. I want to make sure that that is in the record. You also heard a story about how they've not been denied anywhere and how they've never had any problems. Well, there's some semantics here going on because they have a name change. They used to be up in Oregon and they went by the name Oregon Restaurant Services. Sound familiar to you? Just substitute the word Oregon for Nevada. Here's a published decision from the Oregon courts about the litigation where they got kicked out of the state of Oregon for doing what? Doing exactly what they came into the state of Nevada doing. Making representations about how they were not going to have primary gaming, that gaming was just going to be incidental. Turned out not to be true. The state of Oregon revoked their license and kicked them out. There's the published decision from the court where they sued the state and they lost. Here's a statement also from former Metro Detective Scott Kilabrew. I'm going to give you multiple copies. We had Mr. Kilabrew engaged to go conduct surveillance about how they were really operating at this facility and what they were doing. And Mr. Kilabrew's report, signed report that I'm putting into the record tells you in great detail about what was really happening. Now, let's talk about Henderson quickly. Council just told you how Henderson went about and made an ordinance change. Here's what really happened. City of Henderson, just like your code, requires them to bear the burden of proof, to demonstrate to you that they are in compliance with all of its requirements. When the city of Henderson kept pressing them on that and it became obvious that they were not going to prevail in the city of Henderson because the council members weren't buying the self-serving stories that were being spun, they withdrew quickly so that they could come back and tell other people, we've never had a denial anywhere. That's what happened in Henderson. They were representing that they were a tavern. The truth came out that they, their principal beverages are coffee and water. They are not remotely a tavern. As your own investigation found, their sales on gaming were 91%. They didn't have any other business. They are not remotely a tavern. Simply stacking up, I have a lot of alcohol on the wall in my office too. That doesn't make me a tavern. I also want to put into the record all of these transcripts from the Gaming Control Board, and I'm going to quote two of them to you because I think they're telling. You heard this praise about, about Mr. Bernhard? And that's interesting because here is a transcript from the Gaming Control on January 22, 2004. This is what Mr. Bernhard told them and they agreed to. I guess the risk to you that you take is if in fact the review of the board is suggested to take place results in a reaffirmation, that is, there is 70, 75, or 80% gaming versus non-gaming revenue, that would not be permitted under our regulations. That would in effect put you out of business at your restricted locations. And this is what Dottie's admitted in response to that. I have said that if that comes, either I will meet those requirements or be put out of business. That's what they have represented. They, also in 2006, they represented how they were going to change their name to not promote gaming. That's how they got their licenses in the first place. And then what happened after they got their licenses approved? They didn't do any of it. This is why you are finding out now. The representation that they made to the state Gaming Control Board, Mr. Beers has pointed out, and look at what they're doing. They're telling you-
Let you go over a whole minute, Mr. Bice.
Oh, I apologize.
We have to, and thank you very much for coming forward. We appreciate it. Whatever else you have for the record, and we may call upon you if there's a question from council.
Thank you. This is the transcript from the city of Henderson meeting-
Okay.
-where they withdrew in response to the evidence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we would hear from Mr. Thompson, please, and if you'll restate your name for the record, morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. For the record, Danny Thompson, representing the Nevada State AFL-CIO. Had to slither down here, actually. That's what took me so long. I'm a native Nevadan. Was born in Henderson, lived there my entire life. When I was a kid, I worked at the Market Basket on Boulder Highway, the grocery store, had four slot machines that were incidental to the business. I went on with the help of Councilman Coffin and ran my first campaign for the legislature and was elected to the legislature in 1980, thanks to his help. He's a great photographer and writer and, and, you know, when I was elected to the legislature as it was when I was- as it was when I was a kid, the only place you could legally gamble in the United States was the state of Nevada. And that was true the entire time that I served there. And then after I left the legislature, I became the chief lobbyist for the AFL-CIO, and I have been at the Nevada Legislature for thirty-five years. And so I can tell you that the reasons that all of these rules and regulations have been put on taverns and grocery stores and slot parlors and slot operators is evident. You know, today, you can gamble anywhere in the United States, literally. And Las Vegas miraculously has stayed the kind of place that the destination that it is, due to a lot of hard work and enforcing the rules. Other places, Reno, has not been so fortunate. Their gaming has suffered and is in decline. But the reason that, you know, those requirements are in place is to ensure that this city continues to grow and prosper and be the destination, a place that it has become. You know, and you talk about unfair competition, or competition, or competitors. The primary gaming companies in the state are the largest employers in the state. They pay livable wages with retirements and health insurance and benefits that allow people to live with dignity. And so I think, you know, whether the question is that you should approve this or deny this, I think that's up to you. But the reality is, this company is not having slots as an incidental business. Is their primary business? There's no question about it. I think Councilman Beers was spot-on, asking the question, "What is the primary business and how do we deal with this?" And I think it is within your purview to act on this, because, you know, you're the ones who maintain Las Vegas and make it the great place that it is. And so I would urge you to look at this very carefully. I know we're very concerned about this, in that I represent hundreds of thousands of employees that work for those major gaming operators that are complying with the law. And like I said, the law's there for a reason, and, you know, to try to skirt it or get around it is not fair competition, to the other taverns even, that are, that come before you all. So, thank you very much.
You forgot to mention Councilman Coffin's golfing.
He's a great golfer.
Right, among other things, but thank you very much. And is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? I would entertain that, and please state your name for the record in five minutes.
Yes, Mike Ide. I'm with Dottie's, Fifty-three Desert Highlands, Henderson, Nevada. I'd like to make some comments about what's been said, what occurred in Henderson, and what Mr. Vice indicated. We had two locations that we had entered into purchase agreements on. One of them had a tavern license, one of them did not. We went through the process with the first one and received our tavern license. The second one actually had a tavern license, but had to be operated as a bar restaurant with ninety-five-seat restaurant and other items. That is not our business model, and that application was withdrawn. The first application we went forward with in Henderson, and it's the one he refers to that was withdrawn, that location was subsequently brought forward before the Henderson Council and was approved unanimously. So you guys should be aware of what they're saying and what actually did occur. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Your Honor, members of the council. My name is Randy Miller. I have no intention of speaking today, but this is a much broader issue that does take me and my family and my partners under this big net that might be casted. To tell you a little something about, I've been Nevada my whole life. I went to Sunrise Acres, Roy Martin, Vegas High School. I served this community as my partners did as police officers all through the seventies here, proudly and enjoyed it. We then got into the gaming business. I ended up running a public company through the eighties called United Coin, where we had five, we were the largest slot operator in the eighties. As a good soldier, I was out there to put machines everywhere I could. In those days, we were under the law of primary versus incidental. So I put machines in lumber places. I put machines in car dealerships. I put machines in donut shops. I put machines in a lot everywhere, because primary, incidental, you could even do a revenue test if you want. Worked fine for me through the eighties. Then the late eighties comes, and the NRA says, "Too much restricted gaming, proliferation of restricted gaming." So they said, "No more putting these machines everywhere, that it's just incidental." We now are going to define a primary business. And they came up with what we call the Big Four in nineteen eighty-nine. Grocery stores, convenience stores, drugstores, and taverns. The only places that you could get restricted gaming after nineteen eighty-nine. Bob Fess was there for the NRA. John O'Reilly was there as chairman of the Gaming Commission. So we, as tavern owners, and I own ten taverns in the city and county, and I own four non-restricted locations. So we said, "Okay, that's it. No more proliferation of the incidental." The Butt-Fort test didn't work. But then they went on to say in their regulation, "If you are one of these four types of locations, your gaming is presumed incidental." That's in Regulation three oh one five. And we operated under that for many, many years. Now, they left it up to you, the cities and the counties, to determine who got those primary business entitlements. Who you are going to give a convenience store license to, who you are going to give a tavern license to. They left it up to you, and you did that for years. Along comes Dottie's, nineteen ninety-five. And I'd been a tavern owner then. I'd been a tavern owner for thirty-five years in this town. So now they come, here comes Dottie's. Us tavern owners looked at them like Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, laughed at them. "You guys will never make it. It's a ridiculous operation." So they came and they got a license. Me, as a tavern, I asked those same questions. "What's their primary business? What are they doing?" I went to, I watched them grow for many years. Then Bob Fess, who was, to me, the most respected gaming attorney, was my attorney for thirty years. I said, "Mr. Fess, I'm a Nevadan. I'm not going to let this out-of-state company come into my town and take over an industry and create it. Is this concept okay with the regulators?" And Mr. Fess went to the Gaming Commission. He went to the city. He went to the county and reported back to me, "Randy, no entity has any problem with that concept." I said, "Fine, then I'm going to try." Like Mr. McMullin, he has his Irish pub in the county, and he does a lot of food in that. What we as taverns for years said, "Well, if you're going to do a lot of food and have liquor, like Applebee's and Chili's and McMullins, you're not a tavern, you're a supper club. And you only get five machines, not fifteen." So we had provisions for those type operations, too. A tavern always had the entitlement of food, gaming, and restaurant, but not the obligation. It was the entitlement. So then Dottie's makes a big splash here, they become successful, and then here we come, fast forward to two thousand nine or ten. I'm going to try to talk fast, because I only have five minutes, but I'm going to try to give you an overall history of what's happened, because people are taking excerpts, but not giving you the whole history. And so, fast forward, and powers that be said, "Look, we don't believe there's enough definition of a primary business. So let's describe and define what a tavern is." So the state went through agonizing public hearings, workshops, to describe now what a future tavern must be. They also did that in the county. We agonized, we went through lots of hearings. I was involved in all of it. I sat down with board members of the NRA and came up with the county ordinance, as it is today. And it's fine for all of us. We'll all live and exist and prosper in that. But they didn't do it retroactively. They, for instance, there's taverns now in the city and the county that want to sell someday, want to pass it on to their heirs. And I can tell you that there's no tavern in the city that would exist without gaming. I don't know if you want to call it primary, but it's primary to their existence, that's for dang sure. But this situation has been going on, and we're okay living within the rules, but I don't care about Dottie's license. I don't care about, I don't care what you do with their license today. But please understand that those of us in the community have lived within and have adjusted and will continue to adjust anything you want out of us. I want to give you one more small scenario on my tavern that has food and beverage. Here's my average customer. He'll come in on a Thursday night, or a Friday night. He'll buy a burger, he'll have a couple beers, he'll shoot some pool, maybe spend fifteen bucks, and then before he leaves, he'll sit down and play a Keno machine and maybe lose forty. Am I illegal? Because he spent a little more on gaming than he did on my food and beverage? I cannot predict what my customer will spend his money on. I can't predict that, so, thank you. I know I have a lot of time.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I have long known of you, and it's nice to meet United Coin.
I have a very good neighbor, next-door neighbor, that's very near and dear to you.
Well, it is.
Emily and Ross.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close this portion, then the public hearing portion, and I'm going to turn it first over to Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Interesting presentations today. It strikes me that the problem is, is that these, and it was interesting that Mr. Ide made the distinction carefully between taverns and tavern licensees, because that, I think, is the problem. We have a group of these places that are not taverns. Everyone was focusing on the definition of incidental. I was looking more toward the definition of primary. What is this place's primary business? They're licensed as a tavern, but less than one percent of their sales is from food and beverage, not counting what they give away. And so, to me, that's not a tavern. It's something else. And I'm sure that we're now off on a year's worth of gnashing of teeth and angst and amending of ordinances to try to figure out how we're going to deal with this, big picture. It's clear that in the past, our society, expressed through legislative action, didn't want slot parlors in our neighborhoods. Now, we're about to open a dozen marijuana stores, and so times certainly can change. I recognize that. Perhaps we do want slot parlors in our neighborhoods, but these places are not taverns, because there is no primary business other than gaming, in any reasonable definition of the word. Dottie's told us that ninety percent was a fluke, basically, and compared it to one week cherry pick from their first four months of operation. Well, the ninety-one percent, to be clear, was not one week cherry picked from the operation. It was a month's results that they gave us. And while it may be on the high end, we don't know. It certainly isn't flukish, not nearly as much as cherry picking a week that you actually incur a loss on gaming. But even if the total gaming was half as much as it was in that first period that they reported to us, mathematically, the one percent of their business attributable to tavern activity would grow to two percent. Still not a primary business, in my mind. I think their contention that no other local governments in Clark County have had an issue was answered by Mr. Vice. Other governments have, as these places have been figured out, that they're, in fact, not taverns, although they hold tavern licenses. They're not making any part of their living selling food and drink, until, just within the last couple of years, the kitchen consisted of a microwave. So it's just not the same as a tavern. We've all, we're all adults, and we've all been in taverns. You know, we, it would be nice if we could rely on the gaming regulation apparatus to take care of this for us and examine these operations and make the hard decision for us, but they don't, for a variety of reasons, starting with a big casino pays six and three-quarter percent of their win in gross gaming tax. These operators pay a fixed fee per machine that's much smaller, and so there's no incentive for state gaming regulators to get in there and really get their arms dirty and kick over rocks and examine the tires closely. I, oh, I did want to read into the record the letter that was behind tab fifteen in Dottie's folder that they gave us. It's addressed to the general counsel of the Dottie's company. "Please accept this letter as confirmation that Nevada Restaurant Services Inc., including its owners and key executives, are currently licensed and in good standing with the Nevada State Gaming Control Board." That verbiage is far different from "they told us the truth," or "they are in compliance," or "they are a tavern," or "they have a primary business." And that's really the question we're asking. What is their primary business? So I came along with my reading stuff and asked these questions. And I came to the conclusion that denial of the application would be appropriate under the law. Yes, we have approved some of these in the past, but we haven't known how far out of compliance with the primary incidental test they were. We can always raise that as a defense, but you don't really need to, because, in my opinion, having not quite served as many years in Carson City as Councilman Coffin down there, still have an immense respect for the rule of law, and the law is the law, and you have to have a primary business that your gaming can be incidental to, and that's not the case here. But one or two of my colleagues and a number of members of the public counseled some that I should not be hasty, and that it would be more appropriate to proceed a little slower, more orderly. So what I'd propose is this, Your Honor. A motion that we, first of all, that the ninety-day temporary gaming license that we granted on May twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, you'll recall, I would like to, as part of this motion, amend that ninety-day temporary license so as to grant the applicant a six-month temporary license commencing May twentieth, two thousand and fifteen.
If I may, you're saying extend it so inclusively at six months, or you're adding?
I would be adding three months, starting May, so we, on May twentieth, we gave him a three-month extension. I'd like to make that a six-month extension, starting May twentieth. We have the ability to grant, under the law, a second temporary extension for six months, which I would also like to make part of this motion. So we're going to, at that time, we will administratively grant a second temporary license, so that they can operate. But as additional conditions, I would like to have the applicant agree to pay for the city's costs in essentially conducting performance audits of that location, where we can check the revenue monthly and test the tavern versus non-tavern revenue.
Could I interrupt you and ask you, is it possible or considered by your part, can you separate those two? Because I think there might be issues by having those together. If, in fact, you want to grant the extra three months, that's one issue, and then to go ahead and have the other issue of an assessment, to me, seems very separate. But it's your motion, not mine.
Okay, well, and so, at this point, I'm not making a motion. Let me just throw it out, and then we can all have a chance at discussion.
Madam Mayor, if I might-
Please, Councilwoman.
Mr. Beers, what you're trying to do evidently is give them as much additional time as possible, adding three months to the original, and then having a second six months.
Yes.
That's what you're trying to do?
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Ultimately, ultimately, these people don't fit our law.
Okay, let me ask again. They have three months already. You're wanting to put in another three months, so that would total the first phase as six months. And in addition, you want to add a second six months, which would give- And in addition, you want to add a second six months, which would give a twelve-month time to observe.
There's more.
That's how?
There's more.
There's more than twelve? No, but in my understanding, so far?
Yeah, so far.
So far, I am understanding.
Okay, I didn't, I thought it was a total of six months total, but it's six months plus six months.
Well, it's three months, because you've already got three months, and then six months. Okay, so, twelve, okay.
And so, the, it's clear to me, and I don't know about the six of you, it's clear to me that they are not a tavern. They hold a tavern license, but they're not in a tavern business. If one percent, or in a bad month, two percent of their sales are composed of food and beverage sales, to me, that seems pretty obvious. It's not their primary business. So, what I would propose is that we give them some time to bring themselves into compliance, rather than shut them down. And that would mean they'd have to have a tavern, not just a tavern license. It's not their business model, and maybe they'll choose to not pursue that. During that period of time, I think we need to figure out how to monitor this one location and determine what percentage of revenue is attributable to non-gaming activity. Now, they told the Gaming Control Board and the Gaming Commission in their application that sixty-seven point-two percent of gross revenues will come from the machines. So I would propose that we set a measure that for half of the six months, three of the six months, that they achieve non-gaming revenue equal to thirty-two point-eight percent. We're not setting this standard. That's what they told the gaming regulators they would do. And we'll have the measuring mechanism in place to be able to determine what that is. Dottie's would pay our city employees' costs for this monitoring. And in the meantime, the council can take up the larger issue of what to do about these evolved entities that are effectively slot parlors, but that hold tavern licenses, because that's one of the four categories in which you can have gaming, as long as it's incidental to a primary business.
My request, Councilman, was really because if you can separate the time allotment of what you are going to extend, that the second issue becomes, to me, an arbitrary selection of a site. Why only this one? Why not some other one that belongs to somebody else? If we're gonna be equitable, which is what our job is up here. So my hope would be that you'd separate, if you get to the point of emotion, the time for this study and this process we're going through, and how that falls out, and then go on to your next. But I personally would find it an arbitrary selection. Of course, would defer to your right to our attorney there in that. And how do you respond to that arbitrary selection of this particular site, rather than some other tavern restricted license?
If you're asking me to jump in, I'll be happy to. One, I do think it's appropriate to take a motion as to whether or not you want one temporary, two temporary, and how long you want them to be, and I think that should be one motion. I think with respect to the rest of it, we are not agended for a study. We're not agended for setting a percentage right now. We're not agended for any of that. But I do think it's totally appropriate, as the Councilman has said, to let Dottie's know that one of the things he will be looking at are those percentages. One of the things staff will be studying are those percentages. And I think he can condition these extensions on Dottie's assisting us in providing the information we need to come back to the council with a proposed ordinance change. I think that's the appropriate way to handle it.
And if I may follow up on that, if, the first, that we are agended for, that motion, whatever happens with that, but on this second piece, then that would go on to what agenda in the future?
What we would do, depending on what direction you give staff, is staff would immediately begin working with Dottie's and any others in the industry, for that matter, to determine a percentage of sales, percentage of floor space. We could be looking at what the facts are on the ground. Then we can bring those facts back to you in our private briefings, indicate to you that this is our findings, and then look for direction for you as to whether or not you want to change our local ordinances based on those findings.
And going further with this, just a question, being the devil's advocate here, because I feel this is arbitrary, for the city to take on examination, as you have suggested, for this particular site, that all restricted tavern licenses in the city of Las Vegas submit as well to make it equitable.
If I could jump in again real quick, I talked with Mary McElhern yesterday, and I know that sampling every single tavern in Las Vegas is just impossible, there's just too many. But I think what we could do is look at a reasonable number of Dottie's, or Molly's, or Jackpot Jonies, and other taverns, and then come back to you in briefings, and then when you feel you have enough information, put it on the agenda, give us direction as to what you'd like to see in an ordinance. We'll draft that ordinance, whatever you direct us to do, and bring it back.
One further thing. If in fact we charge staff, and let's go to the latter part of your comment, going to other different restricted taverns, these staff members are gonna be out there, not doing their job here. Where do those dollars come from unless we go forward from Councilman Beers? And I am being a devil's advocate here, I realize that. And that's why, to me, there aren't those pieces in place to do this, which I feel just that assessment is making a statement. And it is part of the Gaming Commission and the Gaming Control Board, as the arm of the state, to be doing that process and paying for it. We are not the Gaming Control Board, and we've heard how great the state of Nevada has been all these years, as the only state with gaming, to have in place the assessment and fix of anything. And to me, this is a huge undertaking. Where do we find this money? And the cost, does it come from the restrict, and how do you do that upfront? I don't see how you can possibly put that on own us, on, let's assume we should pick twenty across the board in the city for this assessment. Is the cost, do we have the right to tell them, now you have to do this and pay for it? And if in fact we are taking city taxpayer dollars to pay for this larger assessment? To me, it inures to the, responding at superior, I know a couple of little words, but it goes to the higher body, and that's the Gaming Control Board, and this is their job to do. That's not our job to do. We are here to take care of this city and do the best we can do. So I think what's happening is, what I'm seeing, is a larger, larger, almost like a can of worms that's right here. And I certainly see the issues on both sides. The whole thing comes from the fact that we all know if we've passed, hopefully, third, fourth, fifth grade, that we know what the word incidental means. I mean, that people would not understand what that is, but that definitively, we have already the Gaming Control Board accepting, probably, knowing that there's an imbalance there. I think it goes up to them either to define it specifically with numbers, or two, to strike it, so it's not there. It is their job, not our job. But I know what's in front of us right now is to do the best we can and be responsible body for this city. And so, asking you, and I only throw these issues out to you, Councilman Beers, because obviously, all of us have been thinking about this, and all of us have had people discussing this issue with us. And I keep thinking, why isn't the Gaming Control Board accepting the responsibility definitively to say, "We are striking the word incidental, or you will comply?" And yes, we know through all of the state of Nevada, there is a lack of compliance with incidental, in certain areas. So to me, the first thing's the first thing, and then going forward from that, so, there I am.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman?
Could I just say something before you speak? I think it's about time that some government entity showed courage to face this and do it right. And it's doing it right for the people. My understanding in talking with Mr. Beers was not the original application in which they said what they were going to do, but after he's found out that they weren't complying, and it wasn't accurate what they had said they were going to do. So he got concerned then, and that's why he brought this forward. And I will tell you also that in my ward, we did have someone who had the license, it wasn't Dottie's or Molly's or anybody like that, that we had to take it from, because they didn't meet, they did not meet the incidental and the primary, as we regarded it. But I'm thinking back at the marijuana issue, for goodness sakes. I'm supposed to respect the state, and I'm supposed to follow what they do and meet the needs of our constituents on what they were telling us? And if, and we wrote a letter, they didn't even have the courtesy, the gambling board, they didn't even have the courtesy to say, "Well, we're not gonna reply to this," or "we disagree with you." You can't keep going on like that, or it's only gonna fester and fester, and it'll end up in courts. Now, I, my impression is, I could be wrong, but it didn't matter if this were Molly's or if it were Kids' Cats or whatever it was. It happened that at this time, Mr. Beers looked up everything and found it wasn't being met. And that's why I don't feel it's necessarily that strongly against one location. Now, of course, council knows better.
Councilman Anthony, and then back to you, Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, every, every meeting we have, we probably have eighty or ninety agenda items, and I have to cast a vote, just like everybody else up here on every one of those items. And when I cast my vote, it's based on the information that I have and making sure I'm following the law and following ordinances, and that's how I cast my vote. This particular item, as was mentioned, was on the consent agenda, and doesn't matter with, whether it's on a consent agenda or whether it's a regular item, we still have to vote on it. And in this particular application, probably similar ones have come through, but in this particular one, Councilman Beers brought up a bunch of issues. And it's in his ward, but that doesn't really, that's not the important part here, is he brought up a bunch of issues on this particular application that brought forth more information, it brought forth more questions. Asked whether this particular application was following the law, following the rules that we have, and I gotta pay attention to that. And because of that, we've had some good information today, some good public comments. I've probably had twenty meetings in the last couple of months. I think half the room in here I've met with in the last couple of months, just to make sure that I had all the information that I had, that I needed to vote on this. And I really still don't, because what it comes down to is, in this particular application, which is the only thing we're voting on today, is on this application, is it a tavern? Is their primary business something that's non-gaming? And is their gaming incidental? And if all those three are correct, then I'm ready to vote on this. But I don't have that information today. I'm not saying that they're in violation. I'm not calling them a slot parlor. They have this application, and I think it's reasonable. What Councilman Beers wants to do is to take a period of time where we gather some statistics on this particular business, because that's all we're talking about today, to make sure that they fit our definition of a tavern, and their primary business is something, and their incidental business is gaming. So once we have that information, I'm ready to vote on it. I don't know if it's gonna be three months from now, or six months from now, or a year from now, but once we have that information, and I'm confident our staff can do that. It's, I don't think it's something that they need to, they're gonna have to put some extra time into it, and it sounds like through the motion that the applicant's gonna pay for, but they'll be able to find that information and present it to us, and then I'm gonna have to decide whether they fit those three definitions based on the information that is written down today. So I, I'm gonna support what Councilman Beers is doing, but I do think we need to go through what Brandy Miller said in his comments. I think it's time we go through the agonizing process of us deciding as a city what's a tavern and what's primary and what's incidental, just like the county did and just like other jurisdictions did. So we don't necessarily have to rely on the Gaming Commission to tell us that. We can decide that, because we have the authority to decide that. So I think, I know that's not gonna be part of the motion, but I really think we need to do that for future applications that come in, so we don't go through this in every single application, because somebody could raise it again in the future. So we need to go through that process, and we already have other jurisdictions that have done it that we can learn. The county just decided that this is the definition of a tavern, and if you fit that, then you're good to go. So maybe that's something we do, or maybe we spend more time actually defining what's a primary and defining what's incidental, and actually, I don't know, it's, some people have mentioned revenue-based, some people have said that's a terrible idea, revenue-based, I don't know. But I think Betsy and Brad, it's, we're gonna have to do that, because this is not the last one that's gonna come through. And I, I guess we need to have more discussion on the third item, but I just wanna tread lightly about all of a sudden going back and auditing every other business that has been approved, and, you know, we have to talk about grandfathering stuff in, because when we approve something, we ought to be careful about going backwards and then hammering them over something when they didn't even know it was coming. So I just wanna kinda tread lightly on that. So I'm gonna pay attention to your motion, but the way you think, I'm thinking you're going, I'm most likely gonna be in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. To my left, any comment? Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. The, when you look at this, you realize that both sides are right here, those who have testified for and against the applicant. There is, there's no question that something's askew, and, but on the other hand, they have, I think the applicant is quite right in saying, why single us out when we have approved already their use, which is a tavern or a, or we know they're a casino, and we knew that when we voted for it, and, or they're a slot parlor, and we knew that when we voted for it? And to then, on the actual issuance of that particular permit, the one that follows the land use permit, do we then say, "Well, wait a minute, we're not sure what you are?" So I think that the Dottie's people are perfectly right to scream about that. They also have the, there are other businesses like them, and we have, it appears, singled them out, and I think that's not appropriate if we know that there are other people in like circumstances. We should include them in the same sort of litmus tests that are used to determine what is incidental and/or what is primary, and we don't really know what is incidental or what is primary in the legal standing. We know plain language use, I think every citizen knows, primary and incidental must mean something to them, but it's never been fully defined by the legislature, apparently, and I was there, and nobody asked me to define it. And I've never been on the control board, but apparently, they know what they call incidental. They have approved these folks because they know their model, they know what they submit, regardless of whether it was two weeks, two months, or twenty years, that they do know what's incidental to them, and they say, apparently, they're, they're okay on that litmus test amongst the other six or seven standards that they're supposed to follow. So I'm inclined, Your Honor, when a motion is made that I can vote on, I will be one of those people who would not support a motion that will simply kick the can down the road another two weeks, or six months, or nine months. I think that this can has been kicked sufficiently. So that's, that's my thought on that, not, we're not at a motion yet, Your Honor. Also, the question of studying, I'm all for that. I absolutely think we, and Mr. Beers and I have been friends for so many years, and we're both data-driven individuals, but we really don't have sufficient data to make decisions about this. If you're going to get down to the point where we are going to be the governmental agency of record that is actually going to try to figure out what is incidental, then we need data from all people. we need data from all people in like-minded circumstances, which means all those who are licensed similarly. And we can acquire that, we don't even need to force someone to pay for it. We look at all licensees, and we just ask them to begin to submit data, and their privileged license requires that they do what we ask them to do, that is reasonable, and that is reasonable, to let us know how much they have in revenue from various sources, and expenses from various sources. For example, in the arguments that I've heard in private meetings, and maybe here today, there's been some discounting of the fact that some of these drinks that are served at these individual establishments are complimentary. Well, everybody issues complimentary to some degree or another, but the complimentary drink costs money. It costs time of service, it costs product cost, it all contributes to the cost of goods sold, whether or not it's free or not, and then you, you determine, well, how much did it hurt your bottom line? But the fact is that, one, we could establish that that is to be counted as something, as part of the, the cost calculations when you're getting to whether something's incidental or not, because it is real money that's being poured into a glass. So, all of these things require data, so I think I'm very much in favor of doing a smart data quest over the next six months, or nine months, or whatever it takes to get it from everyone in this business, not just Dottie's. And then, then we can decide on all future applicants, what is smart, what makes sense, what's fair? That's where I want to go with my votes, if I'm allowed to vote in that fashion, and that's, that's up to the makers of the motions, and Bob will be making the first motions on this, that's his privilege. I'm just trying to figure out if, if in the, we have these discussions here, which I appreciate, Mayor, you allowing us to, to be on that, we cannot, according to counsel, vote today on a study. We cannot vote on things that are not agended, but we certainly do send out the signals of what we would like to discuss. We can also request that on a future meeting date, something be scheduled to be agended. So, we can do those things. So, you get my point, is I'd really rather see this move down the road, and it has been kicked around long enough, but vote up or down on the thing as it sits. Then, do the data collection and see what the hell it is that really is incidental, and, and we can do that. Nobody else has, so why not us? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, and there's been a lot of great discussion and dialogue regarding this for months, and this is no, this isn't new to me, I don't think it's new to any of us in regards to where we are today. Concerns I have about this, and Councilwoman's right, we, we should probably have courage to make some decent choices here if the Gaming Control Board is not going to take issue with this. If that's the case, then perhaps we should measure what the county has done, use their example, maybe look at what Henderson has done, and other jurisdictions, and move that direction. And Councilman Beers, I'm concerned about, again, kicking that can down the road for another nine months, or six months, or whatever, because at the end of the day, what's going to happen to this business that we've allowed to open? And that's my bigger concern. We, as a government, as a city, have allowed a business to open, whether it was an ice cream parlor or a slot parlor, it doesn't matter in my mind. We can't tell that ice cream parlor, you know, we're going to let you meet business for three months, and if we don't like your ice cream, you have to close your doors. I can't buy that from a government telling a business to do that. I'm having a hard time with that. In regards to the percentages and all that stuff, that's not my concern. My bigger concern is government regulating competition, in my mind. Clearly, the Gaming Control Board's not going to take this issue up, the county certainly has in one shape or another, I believe Henderson has as well. So, it's our turn, and I think, Councilman, I can, I can support buying the time so that we work through city staff and planning department how our language needs to read. If these are slot parlors, then do we need a category of slot parlor? Is it something else? Is it something different? Because clearly, this doesn't fit the definition of tavern. I don't need to be convinced of that, I am convinced of that. Still the same, I have a really hard time going backwards on a business we've allowed to open, regardless of what that business is. And, you know, both sides have very good points on both sides, and putting our, this council in a precarious position in regards to making this, these difficult decisions. So, Councilman, for me, it's less about Dottie's and the big gamers and the Matter Resort Association, it's more us allowing a business to start and open their doors, and then us saying, you know what, we don't like your business model, you need to close your doors. That's a bigger concern of mine. And I think that would open us up to litigation, Mr. Gerbick. I'm certain that we'd be going to court and spending taxpayer dollars on defense of our actions, regardless of what they may be today. That's always an option out there for any, both parties, I'm sure. So, that's a bigger concern of mine. Forcing this government to regulate competition is not a good thing. Telling a business after you've allowed them, per staff, to open their doors, and Councilman Anthony was right, in regards, this was on the consent agenda, it's a routine item, staff's recommended approval, because it has been that routine item, and we've allowed lots of them to open, we're all guilty of it. And I think someone has mentioned, one of the, one side mentioned, we've voted unanimously on several of these items. So, that's a bigger concern of mine, Councilman Beers, is letting the doors open and then making them close. If we didn't like this, we should have said to our business licensing staff, you know, when these applications come in, let us know before we give them a temporary license to open their doors. Because that's just not fair, it's just not right, and I'm going to have a hard time supporting closing, closing the doors of a business.
Thank you, and Councilman Barlow.
Thank you. This question is more so toward Brad. As a council, we have the ability to define what incidental is, correct?
Correct.
Based on the interpretation of what the state, as well as the Gaming Control Board has defined, but it, in my opinion, they have left it up to interpretation at the same time, being that it's not as clear, clearly defined as one would like. And so, for that, if in fact we were to create an ordinance in the city of Las Vegas as to what the mayor and council defines as incidental, we have the ability to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be through the form of an ordinance?
That would be my recommendation, if you're going to do it, do it in the form of an ordinance.
Okay. And so, if in fact we were to move in that direction, what would be the steps that you would recommend in relation to creating that ordinance? Would that be in the form of a study, evaluating a number of, of, I would say taverns to help us conduct some form of research, SWF analysis, in, in regards to pulling that research forward? And what would it take in order to do that?
What I'd recommend is, again, bifurcate today's argument into whether you're going to give Dottie's a temporary or a permanent, that's one issue, and then, because we're not agended for any more than that, but you can certainly give us direction, simply direct the manager and our staff to look at this industry, understanding the issues very well that have been raised here today, and come back at some appropriate date with a recommendation where to go. We could have a, we could go all the way through an ordinance process, but I'd recommend is kind of even bifurcate that, come back at some point in time with the report, when we have sufficient evidence, let you know what that evidence is, based on percentages of sales, floor space, anything else you want us to look at, and then have a kind of robust discussion at the council level, and directs us to go forward with an ordinance or not. Whether or not this applies to somebody retroactively, we're not even near that yet today, we're not even at an ordinance yet today. And so, so nothing is to suggest that this discussion would apply retroactively to Dottie's or to anybody, that, that's an issue for a future date. As you heard, at the county, they did something similar, they actually did a moratorium on top of it, we're not, we're not agended for that as well either today, but whether they did that or not, they came back with an ordinance, the county commission had a robust discussion, they adopted the ordinance, and they gave people two years to comply. That was their model, it doesn't have to be ours, but there's a lot of ways to slice this, but it all starts with getting it off the dime today, deciding whether you want to give Dottie's temporary or permanent today, and then, after that vote, direct staff to go forward with what I just suggested, and come back at some future date with a report.
Okay. And in addition to that, how many applications do you know of that will be coming back before this council that are similar or identical to the application that's before us today?
I don't believe there's another Dottie's application in the works, but there is a Molly's in the works coming up in the next month or so, I looked at Mary on this, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know there's some that are similar.
For the record, Mary McElhone, section manager for business licensing. Yes, we have a Molly's that will be on the agenda, the second agenda in September.
And would that be the only one for 2015?
In the next agenda, July 15th, we also have Oasis Grill. It's a slightly different model, but it is a tavern license with 15 slot machines that is owner-operated.
Okay. And in addition to that, I understand that there are slot operators that, that own taverns. Is that accurate?
Yes, I believe some taverns own their own slots, and some use a slot operator.
Okay. Slot route operators? And is there anything inappropriate with one owning the slot route as well as a tavern?
No.
Okay. And will there be an opportunity to bifurcate the two as a city? Are we in a position to do something of that magnitude?
There will be, this will be something that I think would be part of this overall study. One of the reasons a lot of people will bifurcate is, one, a lot, some people don't want to own their own slots, they don't want to take the risk, but what you can do is, you can show money on one side of the books instead of the other. If you own the slots and the tavern, then you factor all that together, and one could argue, you look at the percentage of the sales that are slots, and the sales of liquor, sales of tobacco, and you'd have a higher percentage of slots because you own the slots. If the slot route operator owns them, you could argue that the slot route operator's showing that part of the profit, and it shouldn't be factored into the overall profit of the tavern. So, there's a business reason a lot of people do this as well.
Okay.
And that's something we can look at.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Could look at that also.
Correct.
Okay. I think we've got all the questions and input, Councilman Beers.
Well, first, let me start by thanking Councilman Anthony for the promise of a year of agony. Mayor Protem's issue about having a problem with government closing a business, governments have been closing illegal businesses since governments were invented. The issue that we knew they were a slot parlor when we started down the road with them, well, it's the same issue as the Gaming Commission has approved them. The problem is that the information that the Gaming Commission was given, as well as the information we were given, was not candid. I wish we could rely on the gaming regulatory apparatus, but the truth of it is, these non-restricted licensees, I'm sorry, these restricted licensees are just not a high priority for them. The fact that you have a rather blaring misapplication of widely accepted accounting principles go unnoticed can tell us that they simply aren't looking very close at these applications, and you look at this cursorily and don't think about it or investigate, and everything, yeah, I can see where this is incidental to their primary business as a tavern, but it turns out, in reality, 1% of their sales is food and beverage, 1% of their cash sales. There is no ongoing monitoring, because these non-restricted, I'm sorry, these restricted licensees don't pay gross gaming tax, and it is the payment and calculation and accuracy of the gross gaming tax that is behind the state apparatus focusing on an ongoing basis on unrestricted licensees. For restricted licensees, there's nothing, there's no benefit for the state regulatory apparatus to really look at these, and, and so, I just don't think we can rely on their oversight of these kinds of licenses. And I believe, Brad, we have concurrent jurisdiction, it's not that we have any deferential position under the law, we don't have any deferential position to state regulators in these matters, we have concurrent simultaneous equal jurisdiction over it. And so, I believe that's correct.
That is correct. We can be more restrictive, we can't be less restrictive.
The cost is troubling, and a wide-ranging audit program would be expensive, and we don't have the people. And you're right, they, the people we do have already have jobs and things to do. So, my thought was, in this one instance, which is the, really the only thing on our agenda before us, assuming that the applicant agrees, we can at least start developing some data and understanding of, of what the reality is, so that we can develop a plan to move forward. And so, my thought on that was to have the applicant pay for our staff's time spent checking these numbers and doing what other processes and examination procedures that seem appropriate in order to develop this information for at least the next couple of months, so we do have a better handle on it. So, with all that said, I think I would make a motion first, if you'd allow me, Madam the 90-day temporary gaming license that we issued on May 20th, 2015, for this location, so that it is a six-month temporary license starting on May 20th, 2015.
So, it's just, I see, Mr. Gerbick, yes?
If I understood the motion correctly, it's just, the simple motion is to go back and amend the motion that was made on May 20th to make it six months instead of 90 days, so it'd be as if you had granted a six-month license at that meeting.
And therefore, what Councilwoman was asking, it's not those additional three months plus another six months, it's just, we've already granted the three months, this is another three months for a total of six months?
No.
Okay.
We don't have the legal authority to, we have, we only have the legal authority, according to Brad, to grant two six-month temporary licenses. So, the first step is to go back and change the three-month, which was short of the full six months, for the first temporary license, turn that into a six-month temporary license.
Okay. So, that's your motion at this point, okay?
Yes. Earlier, you were talking about having an additional six months, but since you've heard everything, you feel it's better to go this way.
The county's bringing it down, so this will take you to November.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that I was accurate before, because I have to be sure that I'm accurate.
So, there's a motion now.
Hello?
Hello?
May we have an opportunity to just make a brief comment on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Three things that I have. First of all, the, the 1% and 2% of sales that has been bandied about is, with all due respect, absolutely false, and this is where it's going to take a great audit team to go in. It's false.
Can you, if you would, we have a motion that's been made here, can you just speak, speak to that as germane to this vote, then you can make your other comments after.
Yes, well, because I know that-
Is there any problem with the three months, with the three months added for a total of six months, which dates us to November?
Right.
Do you have any comment to that?
I do. I, because you are once again isolating this business, as Councilman Coffin says, not any other tavern to study. The right approach, it would be to act on this tavern, and then do your study of all taverns, not a Molly's, not a Dottie's.
Okay, well, that, that may come later, but this piece and this motion is to extend to a total of six months-
Right.
-as a temporary license.
And, and that, I would just say, would not be acceptable to us, because we don't think it's fundamentally fair, and-
Well, that would be your prerogative.
Yes, of course.
So, let's, we have a motion here, and let me take a vote on this, and you may comment that you don't accept it, but that's-
Well, yes, that's just our opinion, as is his, right.
Okay. Okay, so there is a motion to extend the temporary license for another additional three months from the original three, for a total of six months. And so, that is the motion from Councilman Beers. Please vote, and please post. Please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Now, Mr. Gerbick, if they do not accept this, where are we? Which is what I gather I just heard.
I don't know what "not accept" means, but I know that the motion passed, and the Daddys will take whatever remedy they need to take if they feel there is one. I think the next thing we need to move on to is their desire to make a motion to do the second six-month temporary now, or to leave that alone? Or, and is there a direction to staff regarding the study?
May I ask a question? Of Mr. Councilman Beers and staff? Is this something that can be resolved as to a position with enough information and gathering the right people by the end of this temporary continuation of their license? Can we get it done? Because then why extend it? But if we can't, and we need those six months?
I'm getting a little direction here. Mary's coming to the microphone. We spoke yesterday. We knew that in nine months, we could certainly have a lot of information. I don't want to put business licenses on the spot for something as short as this.
For the record, Mary McElhone. So right now, what you've done is you have extended the temporary license to November. It is going to take us some time, if the wish of council is to conduct a survey of the taverns with restricted gaming and get some valuable information that really only gives us until November. While we could get the information, to be able to present you with information for proposed ordinance, it likely is not enough time. And also to pass another ordinance.
The reason I'm asking on that is it seems probable that there will be other applications coming in for similar licenses. So unless we place a moratorium on that, which we have to agendize in the future, we're just kicking the bucket down the path, and this needs to be resolved. Is the decision that the council wants to take on and set their own rules and move forward and keep extending, I mean, that's all it seems to me we're doing. And because we have 125, is what I understand, in the city of the tavern restricted, correct?
That is correct. We have 125 tavern licenses that have restricted gaming. It depends on what the wish of council is. Whether you just want us to conduct a study, we would have that study completed by November. But to be able to probably propose an ordinance change and get an ordinance passed by November is most likely not enough time.
And would that be on a random sample of taverns? Only Daddys and over? And these are important, if I may have the attention of council. Are these going to be a random sample going future into this discussion? Because I'm trying to get my arms around how much time. Are you going to have a random sample of these restricted tavern licenses? Are you going to look at not a week or a month of their information? But are you, we, the council, going to say, we want to see a continuum of three solid, a continuum, not a choice, but a continuum of three months of operations? How is this going to happen? And if, in fact, you did a random sample, how many percentage-wise would you take on the random sample? And could that be done requiring them to submit their information on a three-month, for argument's sake, sample of their income? How, can you get that done by November?
Mayor, may I weigh in here?
Yes.
I'm sure Mary probably can come up with a pretty quick answer, but I would just suggest that if it's the desire of council to ask us to do this level of investigation, it's clear that we need to do some work on the scoping of what that would include, the methodology, what we would look at, what we would not look at, and what's reasonable in the timeframe you choose to afford us to bring that report back. I don't know that we're really prepared to answer all those questions today. We can certainly put an agenda item on in the next meeting where we can talk through that and get sufficient direction from you. Or you can simply say what you've done in the past, which is, we want the city staff to do what Councilman Beers has asked for, do an evaluation, look at what all these other cities have done, cities and counties have done in their ordinances in this regard, look at our own licensing database, and tell you what we feel are the next steps during our private briefings, and when necessary, bring back an item to you so you can officially charge us to do it.
And when, by what date can you have that, that you've just said? Can you do that by November?
To get that work done?
Well, no, not get the work done, but just bring that back to us so we can have a better sense.
I think we could probably scope out what we need to look at in the next month easily.
Perfect.
I don't want to speak for you, Mary, but if all we're doing is scoping it and not doing the work, I would suggest if we had 30 days, bring it back the first meeting in August, we could give you what we think is a good approach to this.
That sounds very good, that it's up to Councilman Beers, it's his motion. Thank you, Ms. McElhone.
Mayor, may I appreciate?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's incumbent we do that, Ms. Fretwell.
It's absolutely incumbent that we do that. I firmly believe, because it's not going, it's not fair to this business, whatever the model is. Yeah, and that's my genuine concern, is just kicking this down the road a little farther, Councilman, in regards to what happens then. But I think, you know, whether it's this business or another business is my major concern, how we do this. I'm not going to disagree with you about, you know, governments have been shutting illegal businesses down forever. That's what we do. So that's my concern, is that. And I think, Ms. Fretwell, if your team and staff can bring us back something, examine what Clark County has done, is that going to work for us? Is that what we want to do? Take a look at what Henderson's done? Is that going to work for us? I mean, bring that back to us in a reasonable time. And then that will give Councilman Beers the opportunity to create a new definition or get rid of a definition, or whatever he needs to do, is what I think. Thank you, Mayor.
Your Honor?
Yes, please, continue.
We have a problem, and it's bedeviled this debate, and it's one of the reasons why this debate is happening so late into this five- or seven-year evolution of the invention of slot parlors in Nevada. The issue is that gaming regulators don't get to see Daddys' results. We don't get to see Daddys' results. Or Molly's, or the Copper Keg, or any of them. We see a gross sales number that they report to us in some categories, but we don't ever get to see that. And so I think the thought process here, although it does, although it has led to complaints that we're singling someone out, this is the top-level privileged license. This is a gambling license, and we are the government that is issuing it. We have absolute control over the situation. Rare. That gives us the ability, assuming that this Daddys' location agrees as a condition of their six-month temporary license, to grant our staff access to their data, to their results. No one's ever been able to see that before, which is why they turn in a Gaming Control Board Gaming Commission form suggesting that it's 67% of their revenue. And so my thought was that we take advantage of this almost unparalleled opportunity. If they agree, and I can't see why they would not, in the interest of transparency and finding a long-term solution that fits, or I guess, as we say in Carson City, makes everyone equally unhappy. If they agree, we can finally go in and see months of data on how these places operate. Now, not all of them are going to operate exactly the same way. I mean, we already know that we have real taverns out there that have tavern licenses, that are licensed identically to this place, but have kitchens and chefs and waitstaff. And I think we all can walk in and tell the difference between the two, although we and the other local governments in Clark County are certainly struggling with writing that down into law in a manner that works. But my thought was that we would condition the six-month temporary license that we just granted with, assuming Daddys agrees to that, this location agrees to that, us getting to have access to their books and their accounting so we can all understand exactly how it works, which I think could lead to a reasonable long-term solution. And we can decide in November what we're going to do about a second six-month temporary. If it takes another six months to develop an ordinance that makes sense, that's great. We're going to end up at a workable place. So that was my thought. We don't have any authority to go into any other tavern and get this data. We simply do not have the legal authority to do that. So that kind of precludes us from doing a wide-ranging sample.
Question on that, Mr. Gerbick? Since we have been the arm that's extending the restricted tavern license in the city, why don't we have the same right for one as we do for the other? I'm very concerned about the arbitrary nature of this selection of one, and I would rather see it go out with a random selection to a variety of within the city confines to get the information we need to bring it back here so we can come up with what we feel is right for our city.
I think that's a fair observation. I will say this, though, that the only person before you right now is Daddys, not the others. And so if you want to ask Daddys for a level of cooperation that we're not going to get from the others, because we don't have the others before us on any kind of license application, this is the time to do it. And if you don't feel that's fair because the others aren't here, that's fine, too. That's your political call.
Now, this is a question, really, for licensing. We do not see, you do not see on a continuing basis or have access to these figures in our restricted tavern licenses?
For the record, Mary McElhone, that is correct. A tavern license is a flat fee license, and we just recently have been asking for gross revenues. So we see the liquor, and we also see the restaurant revenue now, but we do not see the gaming revenue. We do not see that number. That is a flat fee. It's a stamp tax. They pay per slot machine.
So it would have to be voluntary on their part, not something the city could ask? Or could the city then ask, since now you're getting these gross receipts? We would like to see the breakdown, and we are going out on a random sample.
Your Honor?
Where are you?
We have the authority, no, Your Honor, we have the authority to require it to be given to us from one and all. It's a privileged license. You just simply start gathering it.
Your Honor, for the record, Karen Dedelson-
As outlined by City Manager Fretwell, decide your scope and go. But I would go to all and not just Daddys, or even a sampling, because a sampling will be skewed over, you know, it'll have to be stratified. It means it won't be accurate very well. I mean, you can get all this data. You just have to ask for it. That's all. We've never asked for it.
Do you have the right to ask for it?
Your Honor, for the record, Karen Dedelson, yes, we do. We have a piece of our ordinance that requires all of our licensees to open their books and record-keeping to us for audit or for our purposes. So I do believe we can get that information for you. We just need the time to do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Coffin. Okay. I mean, to me, I think that is, and I don't know where we go with it and whether Councilman Beers would want to go forward. I know from my vote, while I understand the entire process and what you're doing, which I commend you for, I would vote against the selection of this one particular site as the only one I would want to see it. Those licenses, we have the right. If we're going to look and do an examination, let's be equitable about it.
Mayor, can I add to that? And maybe we need to direct staff that any of these applications that come forward, that we are notified in our respective wards so that we don't allow this temporary license to occur. Let them get their doors open. Let them spend money on fixtures and equipment. I think we need to do that until we get this ironed out.
I can tell you that what we can do right now is not do the administrative approvals any longer. So I can certainly talk with staff about that. That's a discretionary authorization that the council's provided, the Director of Business Licensing. And just to make sure no one makes an investment, because the rules of the game may be changing, given your likely direction to further study this regulatory structure, we can certainly do that. That would be something that we would go over with you on the August 1st agenda. But my intent, as I talked with Attorney Gerbick about last week, was that if we were going to have this higher level of scrutiny going forward based on the inquiries that we've received, I think it would be much more appropriate to bring even those temporaries to council for you to decide whether to issue them or not. Because you may choose to do something like a moratorium so there are none, or you may take them onesie-twosies through the rest of this process until this research is completed. So I'll be happy to talk with our staff about that at the conclusion of this discussion and work out a regimen where we can get those items to you or hold them, whichever way you would prefer.
And Ms. Fretwell, just since we have two in the pipeline, is that correct? And they would be becoming before this council for temporary regardless? Correct? They would not be coming for a permanent license right up front? They would be coming for a temporary restricted tavern license?
I would, for the record, Karen Dedelson, I would have to look at them. If they already have been found suitable to hold that license elsewhere in the city
Oh, just be another license.
And they're coming for an additional location, they would be coming to you for permanent licensing.
Would there be a notification from your department then, based on exactly? Because I couldn't concur more than I do with Councilman Ross's comment here, that the amount of funding that one would put in to build or redesign a building that they're taking over, that they need to know that we are in the process of this conversation here right now. But they're in the pipeline, so would they, in the conversation, and this has to be agendized, I know, be grandfathered in, so to speak, but with the knowledge base of what we're discussing?
I think that's right. The, I do want to add one thing to what the city manager has said about the administrative approvals. That's something that, there's no problem with Karen stopping that and just coming directly to council for temporary. There's also a land use component to a lot of this. And some of this discussion has actually focused a little more on land use than it has on character and suitability. And so what we're going to also need to do is I'm going to have to ask the Planning Director to, when these use permits come up for taverns, to also flag them so that you're aware of them at the Planning Commission level. Because a lot of today's discussion has kind of been a blend of character, suitability, and land use appropriateness, and I think we need to identify that.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, thank you very much, Ms. Dedelson. Is Councilman Beers, is it appropriate to make the motion to do something, or whatever?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would make a motion that we condition the six-month temporary permit that we issued on May 20th, 2015 to this location of Daddys upon their granting us the ability to get into their accounting and have our staff independently measure the degree to which tavern activity is actually generating top-line revenue, exclusive of comps. So we're looking at cash sales of food and beverage as a percentage of the overall revenue at that store. We don't have the opportunity, I don't believe, to, maybe I'm wrong, I hope so, but this is the first I've heard that we have the legal authority to do that measurement on any licensee in town. But in the absence of that, this is an opportunity for us to clearly, cleanly get a start on some data fairly inexpensively. And so I would move that we condition that license on access to their reports and that they reimburse the city for the cost of the city employee time involved in doing that examination and developing that data for us.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Would we then be also start, what we have discussed here, looking into other types of businesses like Molly's and Jackpot, you know, and all those others at the same time?
No, singling just one-
Well, that's what, that's my concern. I, couldn't we do what you're saying, but at the same time, in order not to just be looking at one entity, look at some of the others we already have that are not Daddys to see how they fall in all of this, too? Because they've been following the same regulations also. Could you do that?
With respect to looking at them, the answer is yes. With respect to addressing it in the motion today, the answer is no. The only thing before you today is the license of this particular location of Daddys. And so any condition that the councilman just mentioned can't apply to all Daddys. It applies to this Daddys, and I think it applies because it's a temporary license. We typically, when individuals appear before the council for licensing, make them pay the cost of a background check. And so I don't think it's unprecedented to link reimbursement or something extraordinary with investigation with reimbursement. But it cannot apply to any of the other locations. They're not here to defend themselves. They're not agended for it.
All right, then you're saying we probably can't do this with our own money? If we can, I- If we can, I just think also, Betsy, maybe you could look in the budget and see if there is someplace where there might be some money.
Okay. And I just want you to know, Councilman Beers, philosophically, all of this I'm in agreement with, but I cannot vote on this motion. We've already said that you're making a condition to the motion we've just passed additionally to it. I am going to vote against that, because, again, it's arbitrary. You're selecting one. And would like council's, council, council's council, on how do we make this, the study of our staff to move forward, so that we really get a cross-pallet here.
First, I would recommend there is a motion on the floor. You should go up or down on that motion.
Correct.
And then when that debate is concluded, I think a simple direction to staff, which I think we all pretty well understand after this two-hour debate, we will know exactly what to do if you direct us to follow your direction.
Thank you. All right. So there's a motion.
On the motion?
Please.
On the motion.
Yes, on the motion, please.
Yeah. The issue is clear, I think, except for one thing, and that is that there's a, there is an attempt by Councilman Beers to try to define already what is one of the components of the equation, and that is to say that you would not count complimentary drinks and maybe even complimentary food. You know, you can't tell that to anybody in that business, because it's a discretionary thing. The large casinos, the small ones, it doesn't matter. They all have the ability to do that. But in any event, it's still part of the cost of goods sold. You know, it is still an expense item. And, you know, I don't want to do anything to discourage people from giving away free drinks, because somehow or another, it's going to look like they are not in the business. That's what I'm wondering. I'm not even sure. And I'm talking about the revenue calculation as to how they get taxed at the large level. I'm just simply saying that it's cluttered up some, and I, for all I can't support it. Let's put it that way.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. The cost of goods sold element has never been a part of the discussion on primary and incidental. So, for example, a typical tavern probably incurs 95% of its sales in food costs and labor costs. The, and thus, 5% of the sales of the traditional tavern business fall through to the bottom line or to the owner. Whereas in the operation of gaming machines, the cost of goods sold is much, much less, and the profitability is much higher. So the cost of goods sold component has never been a part of the argument. However, I would, in an attempt, vain as it might be, to win your vote, modify my motion to gather the, separately, the value, I'm sorry, the retail value of items sold and comped versus items sold for cash, and develop that information as well. What does make these places unique from a traditional tavern is that nearly 100% of the food and beverage is comped. And that's not true for a traditional tavern.
Your Honor, to you and through you, to Councilman Beers, I just want to add, thank you very much for liberalizing your motion, Councilman Beers. I can't support it, but I still like the idea that you might have given an inch on an item like this. It's truly an issue to be remembered. Anyway, this is all about profit, anyway. We can parse the cost. We can parse the revenue. We can figure out what, you know, where it comes from. But this fight's all about profit, regardless. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. There's a motion. Please, there's a motion. Does anybody need it restated? Hearing no comment, there is a motion. Please vote and please post.
Pull that vote back. Your Honor, I'm trying to use this person's finger.
All right. It's being revoted. There is a motion on the floor. Councilman Coffin has a special unit down there, which he can't operate. Please vote and please post. Goodness, you've got your feet on his lap. You have a special unit. My goodness. And please post.
Wait.
Wait.
I just want a clarification.
We are voting, you have to vote of the article as it's presented, so you vote up or down, yea or no?
No, we don't.
She's just, right, no.
I don't think we need to resend. I think the Councilman had to get a push-on button. If you just want to revote, that's fine.
He needs to learn how to push the right button, whatever it is, for his vote. Okay.
I've worked on that for years.
After all the years you've been pushing buttons, I can't believe it. Councilwoman, you have to vote.
Oh, it's on.
U N A is where you are.
No, I wasn't that.
This was singling out.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Now, would you like to make another motion, Councilman Beers or someone else, or just we don't need a motion, do we?
I move.
Except, do we need to charge staff?
Can I move to adjourn?
We are going to have a 15-minute recess, if you'll get us that far. Do we need a motion to charge the staff?
I just spoke with the Councilman, and I think that there's, all the motions are in. I think staff has enough direction. We'll bring this back to you, the first meeting in August, with the progress report.
By the 1st of August, we will do this, please? Yes, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
We'll have a report on the scope of this review on August, on the first meeting in August.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a 15-minute recess, but we're going to do 33 first. Oh, I can't imagine why. Do we do it from here? Do we have to get up front?
The city clerk's staff's been in the audience all this time, so we just.
Okay. This is administrative discussion for possible action regarding the ratification of Luanne Holmes as city clerk. This is $131,000 plus benefit from the general fund. Ms. Fretwell, please.
Mayor and members of the council, despite my sickness that I got from Councilman Ross last week.
Wrong.
I came in for this item, not the last, most entertaining one that we spent two hours on. I am so happy to recommend today for ratification, Luanne Holmes, as our new city clerk. We hired Luanne in 2009. Why don't you come up here, Luanne? We actually stole her from Henderson, truth be told. We worked together out there. And she was highly sought after by our clerk. Luanne brings an incredible array of talent to this job. Her background is in information technology, and she is highly certified in several professional management credentialings that I think are important to this job. One, she's a Certified Electronic Records Management Practitioner. She is also an Enterprise Content Management Practitioner, certified in those categories. She is also a Certified Master Municipal Clerk. So I can't imagine someone being more qualified to take on this job. And this is a very critical job for our city. Because, as you know, technology and information are coming at us fast and furiously, and the demands of our citizens and our community and each of you for transparent and accountable government hold a very high place in the business practices that we perform. I can think of no one better than Luanne to take us into that next phase of information management and records management and accessibility for our city. In addition to that, she's going to play a key role in making sure that we're engaging the public the right way, whether it's through your boards and commissions that you appoint, your own activities as our governing board, or through elections and trying to get our voter turnout up. All of these things are critical, important roles that the clerk plays for the city. And I feel that Luanne is the right person for this job right now, and I'm glad to have her on our team. So with that, I'm recommending Luanne for ratification for city clerk.
And I love that Henderson is the training ground for the city of Las Vegas. Anyway, we are just so thrilled with what you've been doing. And, Luanne, I'm going to make the motion to approve the recommendation and ratify the recommendation from staff. You've done a great job and been there. Learning process, we saw you go through all the pains of trying to figure this out, but you keep us straight and honest. And move for your confirmation there. So that will be my motion. And please post. And we congratulate you. We'll look forward to this.
Thank you. Thank you.
And in celebration, would you care to say something?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
I will be quick.
Unaccustomed as you are to public speaking, you've got a four-page report.
I will be quick. Mayor, council, city manager, employees, friends, family, and citizens who have no idea who I am, I beg two minutes of your time. I have some really important thank yous to say. First, I'd like to thank Betsy and all of her executive staff for giving me this opportunity to work for not only the most successful municipality in the nation, but also for an organization that truly believes in their employees. That is a very rare find, and I thank you. I'd like to thank mayor and council for allowing me to continue on my journey here at the city. I really love this organization, and I feel like it's home. I'd like to thank all the city employees who I've had a privilege to work alongside. The list is far too long to mention them all by name, but I am most grateful to be surrounded by such talent, drive, and pure dedication. Specifically, I'd like to thank all the members of the city clerk's office, who's been sitting here all morning. Thank you so much. This small, quiet group of individuals has not only ridden every ride of my 10-year rodeo here with the city, but they have done it with enthusiasm, with courage, and sometimes on blind faith. They make me look good, and they remind me to stay humble. They believe in the credo, better together, and they are the simple reason behind my success. A few days ago, I received a quote from an email from another city employee I'd like to share with you. What she said was, "Your staff is amazing. Your staff is cooperative. Your staff is astute. Your staff is responsive. I can state the above with enthusiastic confidence, because I communicate with your office regularly. While we run the city, it is easy to take for granted the caliber of people with which we interact." Thank you, Carmen. You're absolutely right. I wouldn't, I won't take them for granted, and I'm honored to be part of that team. Thank you to every one of the city clerk's office. And last, but closest to my heart, I'd like to thank my family. To my mom and dad for having the love to adopt five of us and persevere with bravery to push us all through successful careers. To my beautiful, intelligent daughter, Megan, from your early years of taking naps under my desk so mommy could work on her strategic plan, to reminding me that while I continually look outside of the box, I still need to have focus. You are my greatest inspiration and my proudest accomplishment. And thank you to the love of my life, Omar. You've been my rock. You have patiently listened to my wild rantings, and you're always my biggest cheerleader. And yes, we can get married now. Abraham Maslow stated, "In any given moment, we have two options: to step forward into growth or to step back into safety." I thank all of you for the opportunity and support to step forward. Thank you.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Wonderful, wonderful. And congratulations, and Omar, God bless you, for being so patient with her all these years. Does she get a raise now, Betsy? That's why this marriage can go forward? Lordy, are you a tough cookie. If we'd known this, you know, wow. Omar, please stand up so you can be recognized.
Yay! Your daughter's not here. Daughter's here? Oh, well, please stand as well. Wonderful. Okay, well, the future holds great things, so she'll be working very hard. But congratulations. And we are going to take a 15-minute recess, and we'll see you at quarter one. Congratulations. When do we swear you in officially? Tomorrow morning? Okay? Nine o'clock, swearing in. We'll be there.[1415.83] Calling all council persons back to the table. You're safe back there, Councilman Beers. I'm just waiting for some, one more person. Here we are. Great, we can, you're it, because Councilman Beer's back there. So we are going to reconvene now.
My step just kicked me on the back.
Good. Okay, and we're going to start off, you are, we are going to start with 34, but prior to that, Councilman Barlow has a clarification for the record, please.
We're getting there. Waiting for Stacy to get back to the votes.
Okay, Councilman.
Yes, I just want for a point of clarification that the vote on the DODIs.
Time extension.
The time extension I approved of. I was under the impression that the initial motion had tied the payment to the extension. And I found out later that it was bifurcated in regards to two separate votes, so I am in favor of the extension of the initial, of the first motion.
First motion.
We'll make a note to that effect.
Okay. So that would have been a 5-2 vote, I think, if you can find it, rather than a 4-3 vote. Okay. The, the extension of time. Okay. So now we will thank you, Councilman Barlow. And your vote was recorded on the second, when, which was the, about the penalty and, yeah.
The payment.
Payment. Okay. All right, so we're going to start off with Agenda Item 34. Bayon's Item Report from Alan, from Alan Pavelka, City of Las Vegas City Engineer regarding the current condition of the infrastructure of the City of Las Vegas and State of Nevada all wards, and thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Alan Pavelka, City Engineer for the City of Las Vegas. So the question was asked after the earthquake, how's, how are, is, how good is our infrastructure? So I'm here to talk about that today. So I'm going to briefly discuss the earthquake and a few of the incidences that happened, and then yearly, we're rated as a state about our infrastructure as a report card, and I'll talk about that. And then talk about some of the local, the bridges and the water lines, and then follow it up with what we do as a city in our maintenance program and our infrastructure and assessment. So on May 22nd, we had a 4.8 magnitude earthquake, but it was 150 miles from here, northeast of Las Vegas. Two noticeable things happened. First, the US 95 ramp closure at I-15 and 95 was shut down, and it was because a seal from the expansion joint had come out, and so they shut the road down. Those pictures are from the Review Journal, and I thought it'd be interesting to note He had received a text that they had closed the bridge due to safety reasons, and he went out there to check it out. So that was really good of him to do that.
And he is a civil engineer?
He is a civil engineer.
Right. So good we have him.
The findings on that were that the bridge was safe and a rubber expansion joint had just loosened during the movement of the quake, and the road was reopened that afternoon. The second incidence was is that a water line broke at Eastern and Stewart. There is some concern about the aging infrastructure leaving parts of the valley more vulnerable to an earthquake. This water line broke where a fire hydrant was tapped in in the main line. Water lines in that area town are generally cement lined cast iron, and they're around forty to fifty years old. And reports did feel that the earthquake did cause that. I wanted to talk a little bit about earthquakes. On the screen, it's the seismic building code standard chart. We're in the yellow zone, Zone C. And what does that mean? It means that we could experience strong shaking, which could result in damage negligible in buildings of good design, but considerable damage in poorly built structures. In 2014, FEMA estimated that the potential losses from earthquakes, floods, and hurricanes of a magnitude six or greater occurring within fifty years and within a hundred and fifty miles from Las Vegas is, is twelve percent, which is very similar to what just happened. I'd like to talk a little bit about building codes. I want to thank Building and Safety for providing me some good information. The UBC, or Uniform Building Code, has contained earthquake regulations and seismic design requirements since nineteen twenty-seven. We adopted that code in nineteen thirty-one, so we've always pretty much been designing for earthquakes. Now granted, during that time, the design has been getting more strict because we've learned a lot more about earthquakes. So as we, as the code continues, we keep adopting the new revisions to it. And remember that a six-point-zero magnitude earthquake is, it's, it's a logarithmic scale, so a seven is ten times greater than a six in that scale.
Could I, before you move on to the next, as I recall, the TV and radio announcements, they said the only reporting system that was reporting was the Natural History Museum. Don't we have a seismometer or whatever the equipment is at the city and else, other places?
You know, I, I don't think we do at the city itself. I would expect there'd be some more. I, I'm not positive in that, but I'd love to find out, and I'll report back to you on that.
And where they are, maybe at the university, but we certainly should have them somewhere that beyond the Natural History Museum. Yes, Councilman?
Your Honor, the Natural History Museum is the formerly Old Elks Club, built right on top of a fault. The fault is what causes the elevation change from the Boulevard down into Cashman Field, down Washington to the Sawyer Building and all that. So it's unfortunate that that's what they are. They're very vulnerable there. It's been subject to sliding for, for many years, and there's a retaining wall there to try to help stop that. But in fact, this goes way back. So, you know, I just, there are places in town where there's some pretty big faults. Wherever there's an elevation change abruptly, you can pretty well guess there's a fault there somewhere.
Thank you. But if you would get back to us as to where the seismologic, seismologic equipment is that reports to us. I mean, is there more than one? Where are they, and how are we alerted ahead of time?
Sure. So a little bit about the history of growth in building in Las Vegas. According to the Assessors Appraisal Department, fifty-nine percent of our bridges are less than twenty-five years old, which shows they're really new. Twenty-six percent of the buildings are between twenty-five and fifty years old, and approximately fifteen percent are over fifty years old. So that shows we're a fairly new city, which is good for both the conditions of our building and our infrastructure, in that they're designed under the recent seismic design parameters. Now, the Americans Society of Civil Engineers reports each year, it grades the infrastructure in the country and in the state. So overall, the nation received a D-plus for its infrastructure, which ranges from roads to ports to wastewater. It's sixteen categories. This, this year, or I guess it's in twenty-fourteen, here's how they rated Nevada. But remember, this is for the whole state, not just Southern Nevada. A C-minus for water, a B for wastewater, C-minus for flood control, a C-minus for transportation with an overall rating of C-minus. And let me go through the ratings, because A is exceptional, B is good, C is mediocre and requires some attention, D is poor and at risk, and F is failing, meaning it should be replaced immediately. Just a little bit about some of our other utilities. The Las Vegas Valley Water District, the average age of water line pipe in Las Vegas is just twenty-two years. Pipe generally would be considered for replacement between eighty and a hundred and fifty years old, and they're shooting for a one percent replacement rate. The Water District has an extensive condition assessment and leak detection program already in place, and they feel they're in pretty good shape. Roadway bridges. ENDOT is required to inspect all roadway bridges except in federal lands. After the recent earthquake, ENDOT did inspections immediately. Inspectors looked for things such as cracks, misaligned bridge members, displacement and settling. They inspected fifty-five bridges through Clark and Lincoln County after the earthquake and found them all safe. In ENDOT's latest bridge inspection report, called the 2015 Preservation Report, it says that Nevada has the lowest percentage of structurally deficient bridges in the country. That's pretty good.
Refining number one.
Yeah. ENDOT currently has a seismic retrofitting program in place. Over the last twenty years, ENDOT has replaced or retrofitted a hundred and thirty-five of Nevada's most vulnerable bridges at a cost of forty-five million dollars. So now I'd like to discuss the city, city infrastructure and maintenance programs, roads, flood control.
If I might, Mr. Pavelka, just one moment.
I'm sorry, Your Honor. It's very important to consider that the bridges always a span. So you, if I'm not mistaken, Alan, you, you have the five-fifteen, let's say, just from the Fremont, just from the interchange spaghetti bowl running to the east, considerable way before it hits a ground or an elevation. Isn't every one of those spans the equivalent of a bridge?
Well, in the reports that I've seen, Councilman, each bridge is listed by a bridge number, but I think it addresses all the spans. But the reports I've seen, each bridge has its own bridge number, but it's the entire bridge with as many spans.
Okay, so then they're not counted, then that's important to look at because they've always been a little bit flaky.
It was fifty-five actual bridges, but on that too, a, a big box culvert is considered a bridge for them. There's a certain span width, and they call that a bridge. So they're not just all bridges with piers.
Okay, let's just not rest too easy on what we've been heard, because I, I got a feeling we have things that are going on that we don't know about until we really look outside the box on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
So now we're going to look at what we do for our assessment and maintenance program. The city map shows the network of arterial roadways within the city. We have a preventative maintenance program and rehabilitation program in place for ten years for arterial streets, and over twenty-five years it's been going on for residential streets. Our operations and maintenance department has, has an aggressive program to resurface our streets every seven to ten years. Fifty-four percent of our city's streets are twenty years old or less, which is really good for us. Regarding flood control facilities, the larger regional facilities are inspected a minimum of twice per year due to the extensive development program set forth by the Regional Flood Control District. Historical drainage problems have largely been resolved, and we have a very good drainage network. In the northwest, we have finished several large flood control facilities along Grand Teton, and it's alleviated the flows coming out of the Kyle Canyon Detention Basin that flooded our streets last year. Our current storm drain system can now accommodate those flows from the Kyle Canyon Detention Basin. Showing here are the larger storm drains and channel facilities. Again, as you can see, our assessment shows that the majority of our storm drains are a grade one, which is excellent. And this map shows the location of our storm drain, our regional big facilities. The city has constructed over a hundred and forty-eight miles, which is approximately two-thirds of those that we had planned. We also have thirteen detention basins here at the city. Those costs are also reimbursable through the Regional Flood Control District. And lastly, I'd like to talk about the water, wastewater treatment plant and its collection facilities. Plant improvements have been under continuous construction and improvement since nineteen fifty. Most are designed under the modern earthquake building codes and design standards. I do want to say that after that earthquake on May twenty-second, the supervisor at the plant went into full mode, did a complete assessment of the plant, all the critical functions, actually called supervisors from all the outlying locations, and filled out a earthquake facility assessment form and did everything perfectly. And, and our equipment was all fine. Regarding sanitary sewers, we also have an extensive maintenance and replacement program for those. Each year, we look at approximately twenty percent of the sanitary sewer system to identify defects and put them in a short-term and long-term repair, repair plan depending on the criticalness of the defects. In the last three years, we've identified a total of forty-seven million approximately in planned repairs, and we've been doing a good job keeping up with that program. Studies performed show that catastrophic failures rarely occur to the sanitary sewer system. So, all things considered, we're a young city, therefore our infrastructure has benefited from the current standards, and it is in much better shape and condition than the majority of the nation. With growth, though, we also need a program in additional funds to maintain the new facilities, and we are taking a proactive approach to meet those needs. So with that, any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Pavelka. Any questions, comments? Well, I just, it's an excellent report, and if you would get back to us, just it can be through an email, the information about where those.
Monitoring stations are, yes. I absolutely will.
And hopefully, they're all working twenty-four-seven.
Close.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And please thank Mr. Bowers and Mr. Cervantes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's a report only, so on to thirty-five. Report for possible action regarding the continuation of the traffic signal impact fee program. Reference all wards. And here comes not Mr. Bowers, your rights, Mr. Jansen. I got my reading specs on, so everybody's a blur.
Mayor Goodman, Members of Council, Mike Jansen, Public Works. Appreciate the opportunity today to give you a update on our traffic signal impact fee program. This is a program we've had in place for a number of years. And the reason I'm here is because under state law and city code, we're required to review the impact fee program periodically over the life of the impact fee program. So the things I'm going to be covering today, first is going to be a review, an update of our two thousand nine, the two thousand nineteen Capital Improvement Plan for traffic signals. Once we adopt an impact fee, we're required to create a ten-year master plan. I'm going to have a discussion on alternative funding. We fund some of our traffic signals with monies that are other than the impact fee, and I want to just give you some information on how that alternative funding program works. And then I have two recommendations for today. One is going to be to recommend for the traffic signal impact fee program to remain unchanged. We think it's working real well. It's doing what we need it to do. And the second is going to be a recommendation for a June two thousand seventeen date as our next scheduled update. And I'll explain why I've selected that date as we go through the presentation. So our two thousand nine, two thousand nineteen traffic signal CIP plan, this was adopted in two thousand ten. And when we were asked to create a plan for ten years, recognizing how unique Las Vegas is with the growth that we have, we're very conservative in terms of identifying what we call potential signals throughout the city. And so as a good example, back in two thousand ten, we had gotten preliminary drawings from the Sky Canyon Development. At the time, it was the Kyle Canyon Gateway, way out in the northwest. They showed us some of the intersections they were planning to create. So since we were looking over a ten-year period, we didn't know how fast growth might occur between two thousand nine and two thousand nineteen. So we identified those intersections as potential signalized intersections, because it really depends on how fast growth occurs. And so we wanted to make sure in our master plan, we were very conservative in showing approximately two hundred and seventy traffic signals throughout the entire city as just potential locations. And then as those intersections become warranted, sometimes citizens ask us to do a study. Sometimes our own staff is just updating data, and we find out they meet warrants. We move them into the design and construction phase. So what this map shows is, since we had our last update in two thousand ten, we turned on fifty-three new traffic signals. And that's the primary update that we're providing today. We still think the master plan is good for the next couple of years, and we're going to be showing that we did in fact turn on fifty-three new signals. It also has a breakdown of those potential signals by ward. Ward six has the most growth still, most land still developed. So as land develops, demands on intersections go up. And as you can see, we've identified about a hundred and ten signals still likely at the full build-out of the city as we completely build out Ward six. The other wards, there's not as much land to develop. Some of it may redevelop, which may generate additional trips. But we're showing approximately twenty to twenty-five signals that we anticipate over build-out of the city. Not so much that they're all going to be signals we build between now and two thousand nineteen, just locations that at any given moment, if, if, if development occurs, there's a chance that we may need a signal at those locations.
In the smaller county islands on this map, how's that coordinated, what they're doing? Are they on our electric band? The small ones, I'm not talking about the giant islands there.
So we have some locations, Mayor, where on one side of the street, it's a county island, on one stride, side of the street, it's a city. And we may have one little parcel that happens to dip their toe into the city. Same thing happens on the county side, some locations. We generally try to keep our electrical service points so that our systems are separate. But there are those occasions where it wouldn't make sense to spend quite a bit of money on a separate service if it's just one or two small parcels, and the county does the same thing. So we work real closely together to coordinate those. If at all possible, we would have our own circuits so that our systems are totally independent and would be solely for our residents.
Because I know I've had compliments continuously about how wonderful it is to drive up and down Charleston, assuming everybody keeps the appointed speed, and how impossible it is on Sahara. So all of these, you can synchronize to the best of your ability where it warrants that flow.
Correct, Mayor. We, that's something we definitely try very hard to do. Sometimes things that happen that can put a signal out of coordination is if there's an emergency, if there's a fire somewhere or an emergency vehicle comes through, they can preempt the signal. So a car may be all set to have the lights turn green so that if you're driving down, you would catch them. But if there's a, a fire truck, say on the north-south street, that is responding to an emergency, they can change that signal, turn everyone else's red so they can get to the emergency quicker. And sometimes you then may get stuck at the next light. And so sometimes that happens, but I think that's just a balancing act that we, we do. But generally speaking, we try to have them all coordinated.
No, I have people tell me they are trying to get around the county, and they'll come down use Charleston to a, so they can get on a synchronized band. Thank you.
Here's some additional findings I wanted to give you. So we had fifty-three new traffic signals since we had our last update. That was in two thousand ten. And the last update projected over that ten-year period that we would probably turn on eighty-five new signals by the end of two thousand nineteen. So here we are today. We're at about sixty-three percent of that projection. I think it's pretty close. You know, those projections are really sort of best guesses, because we really never can tell how fast development is going to occur and trigger those additional demands on those intersections. And so as it stands, it's, it's, it's in pretty good shape. We think we've captured all the potential signals that we think we need through the next update. And so we're not proposing to add any additional potential signals to the master plan, which still has two hundred and ten potential signals remaining. So those locations. So those locations, we think, have captured the locations that we anticipate might pop up over the next few years. The other thing is, the impact fee is based on land use assumptions, and under the state law, those land use assumptions really mean what type of growth are you projecting over that 10-year period? Because the growth will directly affect those trips on the road. And so I think the projections that we did back in 2010 are still pretty reasonable. They projected in 2019 that our city of Las Vegas population will be around 670,000, and the latest estimate I got from our planning department is that for 2015, we're right around 625. And we always have an opportunity to do an update, really, at any given time we want. So if we felt that all of a sudden, we were seeing a huge spike in population, we could definitely address that. And, but for now, I think we're in reasonably good shape as it relates to the findings that we've come up with so far. I mentioned alternative funding. So when the impact fee was created, it recognized that sometimes we build our traffic signals with roadway projects. As an example, when we built an interchange in the northwest, we anticipated a significant amount of traffic would come when you build that interchange. So as part of the roadway project, we put in a lot of those traffic signals. And the impact fee is basically saying, 40% of all the traffic signals that we build, based on historical patterns, probably are going to be built by other sources. And again, it was the best guess, based on prior data, that that seemed to be a reasonable number. Interestingly, in the update I'm providing today, we found that actually 74% of our signals were funded with alternative funding. But I'll point out, of 39 of those alternative-funded signals, 14 of them were by federal funds, a funding source we never imagined we would have been able to get, and it only happened because of programs like the American Recovery Act. Back when that act was passed, we had a number of traffic signals that were sitting in the ready mode, that we were planning to bid and construct, and they were eligible for those federal funds. So we were able to save our impact fees and use those federal funds to build those signals. So it was a great deal for us. Similarly, when we did the Casino Center and Grand Central Transit Project, a lot of traffic signals were necessary to make that system work. That FTA stands for Federal Transit Administration. We were able to have all those traffic signals also funded by the federal funds. And then the Tiger Grant was another federal program that we were able to build a pedestrian signal on Sahara. So those were things I don't think we ever imagined we would have had that opportunity. So the next bullet I'm pointing out, if it wasn't for those federal funds, our alternative funding percentage would be a lot closer to that 40% assumption. And again, it just stands to show, when an opportunity like that arrives, we want to take advantage of it, because if we don't, someone else, someone else will. And the last bullet, I want to just point out, our ability to continue meeting that 40% alternative funding expectation could be dependent on passage of a ballot question that we're going to see next year. The November 2016 statewide ballot will have a question to consider the continuation of the fuel revenue indexing program. We're in a three-year trial period with that program, and to continue it requires a vote of the people. And so if that tax question was to pass, we would have more flexibility in the types of transportation projects we could fund, such as traffic signals. And so because that's an important sort of step for us, if it passes, we have flexibility; if it fails, we have less flexibility, I've recommended that our, our next update is going to be at a time when we'll, we'll know the outcome of that. And I'll explain that a little bit further. Just to give you a snapshot of how do we fund those 53 signals, 14 of them came from RTC funds, so that was an alternative funding, 14 came from the federal funds, 14 came from the signal impact fees, five of them came from private developers. This is when a developer is going to open a large commercial project, and he says, "I can't bring the traffic in and out of the street unless I have a traffic signal." So a couple of examples. On West Sahara, there was a new shopping center built near Walupai, very large shopping center. In order for that traffic to get in and out, he needed a traffic signal, but it's for a private driveway. We can't use any of our funds for private driveways, so that was funded by the developer. Another one, Councilman, Mayor Potem Ross up on our Decatur at Rice by the Target. I believe that was an example of a signal where a developer paid for it. We didn't need it for our public street network, but he needed it for the private development. And so we occasionally will have some of those. The most recent one was the one at World Market Center and the mall. That driveway was necessary to be signalized because of the amount of traffic coming in and out of there. So just to kind of show you, they pop up periodically. We also had the County Beltway. They funded two signals at Walupai in 215, and they also put in new signals at Jones and 215 when that interchange was rebuilt. And then we had one signal funded by Endot. If you're on US 95 and you get off at Lake Mead in the southbound direction, used to be a very challenging intersection for us at Rock Springs in the off-ramp, that's now signalized. The intersection flows a whole lot better, and again, we were able to tap those funds for that. And then right out our doorstep here, New City Hall, the parking garage, that signal that, that operates the Clark and parking garage traffic signal was funded as part of the City Hall project. So that just gives you a snapshot of how we funded those signals since we had our last update in 2010. So the two recommendations I have is that the traffic signal impact fee program should remain unchanged, because we're not adding any signals to the master plan, and we still think the land use assumptions are reasonable. And the second recommendation is that we should review the program again in June 2017. And the reason for that date is that'll be six to seven months after the November election, and we'll know exactly what opportunities that vote yes or no does for us as it relates to the transportation system. And then that'll, that'll tell us if we'll be able to have that source for alternative funding. And with that, that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Jansen. Any questions, comments?
I just have a comment, Mayor. With your permission...
Please.
Mr. Jansen is on his game. We are so blessed to have him. He's been great for my office. I imagine you do the same for all the other council members and the mayor as well. Mr. Jansen, I sure appreciate your professionalism, your knowledge. Your bosses already know how great you are anyway, so I'm going to tell them that. But if, no more comments, Mayor, I'll make a motion.
There are none. Yes, please.
I would move to accept this report, and we keep the traffic impact fees as they are, and have Mr. Jansen back before this council on June of 2017. That's my motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion? Please vote, and please post. And the motion carries. Thank you so much, and thank you to Mr. Bowers and Mr. Cervantes. And now we have a report by our famous Fire Chief, William L. McDonald, regarding the changes and improvements made to the emergency response deployment operation, the experience and performance of the department, and the implementation of a new delivery model for medical services. Reference all wards. Good afternoon.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here today. My name's Willie McDonald. I'm the city's fire chief. I just want to say again, it's an honor to be a member of the organization. I'm really proud to be a Las Vegas firefighter, and I'm proud because our folks are completely dedicated and committed to serving this community. They see it as their obligation. They love doing that. They are focused on customer service, and they're always looking for opportunities to improve on how we provide those services. So it's, it's fun, actually, to come and share this information. Back on March 3rd, 2014, as a result of some studies we had done in the department, some information that we had received, the result of a record, a report that was done here in the community, and our own opinions, we proposed to launch a new pilot program on how we provided prehospital care services. And so I wanted to come and talk to you about that today, share with you the experience and the performance we've had during that period of time, and then tell you where we're headed in terms of the next several months. I will provide you with some background, how we got to, where we proposed these recommendations, so the history on our system before 2013, the system changes that we had proposed, our purpose and objectives of that pilot program, the fact that it was a conservative study so that we knew that we would be able to monitor, control it, and learn from that, the implementation that we have been doing now since that time, and the franchise agreement that you approved last year as a result of some studies that we had done, and evaluation we had done on the system and what we wanted the new system to look like into the future. Then, of course, I'll provide you with some results. And so the council took a formal action back in 1999 to authorize the fire department to provide prehospital care transportation services. That was approved and authorized through the ambulance ordinance, supported by our firefighters. They really wanted to do it, saw it as an opportunity to provide great service to our community. You also, in 2000, you awarded two franchise agreements to private ambulance providers. So we, we really thereby established a dual transport unit response system at that time. Those agreements were extended for 10 years in 2005, and we exist with both of those today. And then you approved an extension of Medic West's franchise agreement this morning on the consent agenda. Medic West was purchased by AMR in 2007, and that's just a point of reference, just to share that information with you. Here's the resources that we have on duty every day that provide prehospital care services. Our primary service that we provide, of course, is fire rescue services, has materials responses. We, we pride ourselves, though, on being the primary provider of prehospital care services. Every day, we have 166 firefighters on duty. They're all trained in providing prehospital care services.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Just a question. Per 100,000, where does that put us? The 166?
Okay, so we, we would measure that based on the total number of firefighters that we have. So we're about one firefighter per thousand, because we have 600 sworn firefighters in a population, as we just served, about 600.
Is that a best practices? Or are we needing more? Where are we on the scale?
Okay, so of course, I'm going to say I'd like to see it higher, but we provide a great level of service, and we really are focused on making sure that we can provide that to our community.
Great.
And I spend a lot of time talking with our city manager about the resources that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We, we provide those services from 20 fire stations, and I think it's important to point out that fire stations aren't independent, and the resources in them aren't independent. It's a system. All of the system works together. We support and depend upon each other of the resources within those, those fire stations to be able to provide a high level of service throughout the community, so they all work together. We have a minimum of two advanced life support units in each one of our fire stations, and in the ones that I've identified, there are those seven, there's an additional unit, at least one unit, ALS unit, in those, in those stations. We have 23 rescues, two-person companies with at least one firefighter and a paramedic throughout the community to provide transport services. We have an ALS field supervisor. Our alarm office is an integral part of how we provide services, and they are excellent at what they do. And of course, we have three battalion chiefs that manage all of our resources. So I wanted to give you some background on the transport history. So we, we anticipate, or we estimate that there's about 55,000 people on an annual basis, on average, that are transported, patients that are transferred to emergency rooms in the city. Over time, on average, five years before we made this implement, we implemented this change, we were doing about 30% of those transports. AMR was doing about 70%. So you can see the totals, the total transports done by LVFR in 2013 and previous to that time. We were, a report was commissioned by the International City Managers Association back in 2012, and they made some specific recommendations as it relates to our prehospital care system. They suggested that we either get in more fully, engage more, or get out and remove the resources. They recommended that we defined our transport guidelines, so it was very clear on when we were supposed to transport and who we're supposed to transport, to reduce the redundancy of the dual transport system, increase the efficiency, not use unnecessarily very limited resources, and to work collaboratively with our partners. And so in terms of our history, as I say, we had been sending two transport-capable units to all the calls, with the exception of motor vehicle accidents. There wasn't, there is a 10-year, 10-year franchise agreement that you just approved, a renewal for Medic West, and you approved a new franchise agreement for AMR last year. We had been looking at some ways that we could provide better service or different levels of services, and you know that prehospital care and the medical services have changed over several years, and so we wanted to make sure that we were addressing those. We did set a date for which we were going to make the changes. That was March 3rd, as I mentioned, of 2014. We implemented that plan. We'd been evaluating our performance and the impacts. As I say, we're the only ones to provide fire and rescue service in the city, so we needed to make sure that we could maintain an acceptable level of those services, even though that we were going to increase the level of services in terms of prehospital care. We did develop a new system during that time. We got together as an organization. We looked at all the things that had changed in the last 15 years in terms of health care, where the community, where the city and the country was going in terms of health care, Affordable Health Care Act, how people wanted health care and how they received health care. And we did that internally with the assistance of a prehospital care expert to help design what kind of a system that we wanted, beginning in December of 2015. And as a result of that, we reached out to AMR, our partner, who sent their president here to work with us, to negotiate a new agreement. So the new changes are, we're going to transfer, transition to a single transport unit. We've identified the types of calls that AMR would respond to, and types of calls. We respond to 100% of the calls, but which ones we would send our rescues to. And we've really decided that it's important for us to focus our resources on the most critical of patients, and that our folks would be responding to and serving those, those patients. We clearly defined transport protocols. We increased the number of patient transports through this pilot program that we initiated. We have been able to reduce redundancy, increase revenues, and evaluate the system capacity. So we've got some real-time practical experience with doing that.
Does AMR or any auxiliary responder report as well back to fire and rescue, to you?
They do. Every month, in fact, they do it more often than that. We receive their information about their response times, the number of calls that they have gone on, the types of calls they've gone on. We get that information every single month.
Thank you.
So here's how we looked in 2013. This is the year before we made this, this transition. Our incident volume was 100,000 calls for service that year. We had seven fire fatalities as a result of hostile fire in the city of Las Vegas. Property loss was 10.7 million, and it's an estimate. It's what we do. All of our captains are responsible to do that, when they respond to a structured fire. Our resuscitation rate for certain types of patients that we respond to, these are witness, witness arrests, that we are, that have a shockable rhythm, so they have a certain types of cardiac rhythm that we can shock. We had a 33%, resuscitation rate that year. Our ability to confine fires to the room of origin, 79% of the time, we were able to do that. Our total patient transport, 16,000, and our revenue from those transports was 6 million. And the city conducted a study, a survey, a customer service survey of our community in 2013, that determined how the services that they received, how they felt about those. And in that year, our folks were rated very high. Almost all areas of the community rated us as very satisfied with the services provided. There were some areas that we thought we could improve upon, and so we set out to do that the next year. In 2014, we responded to about 5% more emergency calls than we did the year before, 105,000. Proud to say, stand here and tell you that we had no fire deaths in the city of Las Vegas in the year 2014. Our property loss was estimated at $5.09 million. Our resuscitation rate, 25% for those same types of resuscitations, or those types of pulseless non-breathing patients. Our total patient transports increased by about 50% to 24,000, and our revenues that resulted from that were $9 million. I want to switch to this document reader.
May there's a question or comment, please?
Yes.
Yes, before you move forward, I, I think this is very significant to point out in regards to zero fatalities in 2014 thus far. Thank God. And in addition to that, the property loss, 5.9 or 0.9 million dollars, in relation to the amount of people that live within the city of Las Vegas proper, which is approximately a little over, I would imagine, 600,000? And when you do that in comparison to the percentage, that's a very low number in regards to property damage. And so the question I would like to pose is, how much of this has, has to do with the sprinklers in buildings to include homes?
Well, Mayor Goodman, Councilmember Barlow, thank you for asking me that question, because automatic fire sprinklers, in my view, are essential to improving the level of fire safety in a community. The fire service really entered into the fire sprinkler business over 100 years ago, but many cities started to increase their requirements for commercial structures back into the late 70s. And as a result, we've seen the fire deaths in commercial structures drop to almost zero across the country. Our own experience here in the city of Las Vegas is, in the last 10 years, we've had 49 fire fatalities. 41 of those have been in residential, residential structures. And so the experience that we have is consistent with where you find it across the country, as most fire deaths occur in homes. as most fire deaths occur in homes, over 70% of them. And it's likely because we have so little ability and influence over the level of safety that are in those homes after they're built. We don't get into them. We don't have the ability to get into them. And so, building in sprinklers, in my opinion, is number-one way to improve the level of safety and protect your residents in your community. Now, in terms of us being able to have zero fire fatalities, it's an entire effort of our organization. It starts with how we build buildings. And our Fire Prevention Bureau is second to none. Our folks are very dedicated. We made a move a few years ago to put our inspectors in our fire stations and improve that relationship between prevention and operation, and it has paid off for us in dividends. The relationship with our folks is very high. And so, building those buildings safely and keeping them safe is paramount to being able to protect your community. But, once they start, the aggressiveness of our firefighters is key. So, for us to, what we try to do, and what we do here, and we have done here, is we really blanket a fire. We get the resources there as quickly as we possibly can, and we get them there in force. And our folks are very aggressive about how they go about putting those fires out. And life safety is number one, both for our firefighters and the people that might be trapped in those facilities. And so, we make a concerted effort throughout the organization in trying to rescue those folks and keeping our fire losses low.
Thank you.
Okay. If I could change the document reader here for just a minute. We began back in 2008 submitting our pulseless non-breathing for those kinds of patients that I just mentioned, witnessed, and the types of rhythms that would provide for us to be able to shock those folks and resuscitate them and get them into the hospital and potentially leaving the hospital neurologically intact. We started doing that back in 2008. You can see, in 2008, we were only resuscitating, these are people leaving the hospital, about 5%. And over time, we have worked on all of the steps, all of the components that you have in resuscitating someone and allowing them to get out of the hospital, or walk out of the hospital, and tried to, through a rule-out method, find how we can improve on that resuscitation rate. So, we have been able to get that up to between 20 and 30 on a consistent basis over all the years since then. We've only had a couple of times we've been able to get it over 40. It's very difficult to do, but that remains our goal. And you can see right now, this last, these are all two quarters or six months. Right now, it's 30% here in the community. It's a very high rate, but we are, we're going to strive for 40, because that's, we think that we can achieve that. Okay, back to the PowerPoint, please. This is the results of this year's survey, or 2014 survey, the community service survey. And you can see that the entire community rated our services as very satisfied, and our folks are very proud of that. And I might just mention that they did that during a period of time. We made a lot of changes to the organization, and we're short-staffed in every area of our department. And so, to be able to be able to provide this level of service and make all the changes that we did, just demonstrates the dedication of our folks. The accomplishments during this same period of time is, we were reevaluated by the insurance service offices. We retained our Class 1 designation. We were reaccredited through the Commission on Fire Service Accreditation International. Our technical rescue team, the only one in the county, has risen to national acclaim, excuse me, international acclaim, through a lot of the training that they do and the equipment that they carry. But, they developed the rescue practices on the high roller that had not been done before. That's the only reason that the high roller can operate. And we've been contacted from other countries on how to do that and how to provide those kinds of practices. So, it's national, international acclaim for our technical rescue team. Our bomb squad is making great strides at integrating into Metro's Armor Task Force, and we're very proud of that. And it's a direct relationship to our leadership of our bomb squad commander.
And Chief, we still only have one?
We're the only one.
But, we only have one, right?
We only have one. Bomb squad?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And you look to the future?
It's the only one in southern Nevada.
The only one in southern Nevada.
Only one in southern Nevada.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, Chief. I remember a few years back, the city and the county had discussions in regards to the bomb squad, and I'm not sure if you were around at that point, Chief, but I know that Betsy and I have had conversations about this. And we streamlined the process of the city of Las Vegas handling those bomb squad calls. And I want to know, does the county play any part in regards to the areas when we cross over into their jurisdiction? If they share in the costs of us having to address the needs of the community from that standpoint, as far as the breakout costs?
Okay.
Or is that something that we, as a city, are wholly responsible for and pretty much utilize our budget in order to manage that county, manage that countywide?
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, Councilmember Barlow, it is the only bomb squad in southern Nevada, and we bear the cost of that. We are a part of a task force, though, that has resources that provide a very high level of critical and special services to the entire county and points beyond. We actually have gone into other states with our bomb squad, and those folks are also our arson investigators, so we, they're actually dual-purpose. But, yes, we do bear the cost of that.
And what does it cost for us to operate the bomb squad?
It's about $2.7 million a year. And I might mention that the task force and our responses are not only into the county, but they're also into North Las Vegas and Henderson, wherever a bomb squad might be called.
Correct. Because my thought moving forward is, even if there was a percentage in which the other jurisdictions participated financially, being that we do cross those boundaries, those jurisdictional boundaries, into the other municipalities, having an opportunity for them to share in that process, that financial process of maintaining the bomb squad, being that we are responsible for the need of all of southern Nevada, has that been a conversation? Or is that, or will that be a conversation moving forward in regards to, at minimum, a percentage of cost sharing?
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, Councilmember Barlow, it hasn't been, at this point. Councilmember Barlow, I will suggest, though, that we receive in kind, I guess, support from the FBI, as well as the training that we receive from other agencies for those folks. The actual direct costs, though, are borne by the city. And so, it's certainly an appropriate discussion to have, but it has not one that we have had at this point.
Okay. Betsy?
I thought I was going to get a pass for a minute there. There are several, it's a unique position to be the largest city in the largest region of the state. And as a result of that, there are certain specialty units that the city of Las Vegas has taken on for various reasons, the bomb squad being one of them. That's what I would describe as a regional asset. I would also describe our hazardous materials response team as a regional asset, as is our technical rescue team. We are the primary provider of those services to Clark County in total. The chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but at this point right now, Henderson is the only other municipality, local government, that has a hazardous materials response team, and I'm not even sure they have a technical rescue team. The chief can clarify that. So, to a great extent, for some of these specialty response units, we are, if not the only, a major provider of those services. We are planning on having an additional discussion item coming forward at a meeting later this summer to talk about some of those mutual and automatic aid issues, Councilman Barlow, that you're referencing, because they're all tied together. But, I think we need to be fairly cautious, because I think what the chief was referencing is that, for things like bomb squad, oftentimes, the region doesn't need two. You really only need one with highly coordinated assets and resources deployed in an incident. And the FBI has kind of reinforced that over the last several years. You can jump in, Chief, if I'm wrong. Sometimes, more is not better, and having one unit that is highly trained can be sufficient for the call volume. It is a little bit difficult, from a fiduciary standpoint, to have the city of Las Vegas taxpayers bear the sole burden for some of those costs when we're serving other taxpayers. But, they're not isolated events, and there are a lot of coordinated service delivery models that we have been working on as a region for 30-plus years or more, since these specialty units have been created. But, certainly, we can, and this is a constant source of conversation with the chief, it was something that was brought up in this ICMA study, that you all authorized to review all of our inter-local agreements regarding service delivery, for everything from hydrant maintenance, all the way to these specialty units, to our agreements with the EMS private providers. We're systematically working through all those recommendations. We're happy to look further at that and more discreetly at those service costs and what kind of service delivery we're providing, and initiating some conversations regarding those services with our partner agencies.
And the only clarification I would make there is, we are the only technical rescue team. We have Seaburn Unit. We are, our hazmat response team is a Type 1, which is the highest level. They can mitigate the highest level of types of hazardous responses, hazardous spills. Henderson's is a Type 2, I believe, and it's just been restored up.
If I might, Chief, to ask you, in the deployment of the bomb squad, what's the process? Who issues that? I mean, I know you're all in communication, all municipalities and all government structures, I realize that, but what is that process?
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, we just modified that call-out process on May 1st with great success. And this is, again, my sense that the integration and the relationship between our bomb squad and the armored task forces dramatically been enhanced over the last few months. The call-out practice is, is that any patrol officer from any of the jurisdictions that has any contact with something that they think may be a special hazard, that they would contact Metrocom, Metro's or dispatch center. Metro then will call on by phone, what we call is the contact person, there is a special acronym for it that I can't remember what it all means, but there's only two people that fill that role, our bomb squad commander and Armors Lieutenant. And they take call one week at a time. So, right now, the bomb squad commander is the on-call person. That person then receives the information that the patrol officer, whoever else might have come in contact with, does a description over the phone to our bomb squad commander. That person makes a determination of who to send to those calls, whether it's one, Level 1, 2, or 3. That's how they've got it decided, or defined. Level 1s are the smallest number, and they're the least potential for some kind of a bad outcome, and then 2 and 3. And he has the access to all the resources that would be available between ourselves and all the other members of the task force, including the FBI, and makes a determination on who to send.
And what is the number approximately of those assigned to, as personnel on the bomb squad?
In our city, we have 12 bomb techs and one bomb squad commander.
Having had the good fortune or incredible experience of going to the FEMA training back five years ago, with so many from our community, and realizing it is possible that the bomb squad, and especially in the world of today, might be needed at multiple sites?
Right.
Are we in a position to be able to handle that? Which is why I asked about how many in personnel, but knowing some are off and some are on?
Right.
And to be prepared rather than reactive at the end?
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, we have the largest percentage, the largest number of bomb squad techs, but the FBI also has four, I believe it is, here locally. And they work very closely together. Our folks take their equipment, their truck, home when they're off-duty. We have three on-duty at all times, plus the bomb squad commander. So, they can call each other back if necessary, and they all have so much access to the armor, the armor resources.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. I just want to quickly go through the other accomplishments that we've had in 2014. Mission Lifeline is a special award for a special type of heart attack. It's called STEMI. That's S-T elevation M-I. It's the most deadly of heart attacks, and the award is for how quickly, from the time that you recognize that someone is having that kind of a heart attack, based on their heart tracing, to actually getting them into the cath lab. The studies show, and the experience shows, that the faster you can do that, the better chance that the patient has of surviving that kind of a heart attack. We have just received the silver level. We had bronze last year, received a silver level this year for our efforts. Our dispatchers accepted the request and the responsibility of becoming ACE accredited. That's a call, that's the Accredited Center of Excellence by the National Emergency Dispatchers Association, National Academy of Emergency Dispatchers. A lot of criteria, things that they had to go through to get to that point, and in May of this year, they actually achieved all the requirements of the ACE accreditation. They have to do it for two more months, but one of the big ones is pre-arrival instructions, or teaching someone how to do CPR over the phone if it's indicated to do that. It's very difficult to identify, it may not sound that way, but it's hard to figure out if someone needs to have those pre-arrival instructions or not. Ours are doing it over 70% of the time when it's indicated, and so, it's one of the highest levels in the country, and our dispatchers have been able to achieve that. This gentleman, at the end of last year, suffered a severe heart attack and became pulseless and non-breathing. His wife was awakened by that, and she called our dispatch center. The two ladies on her right and the one on his left, on his right and her left, are our dispatchers in our fire alarm office, and they taught her how to do CPR over the phone until our units arrive. And he showed up at Station 9 for a celebration just a couple of weeks ago. So, it's an amazing tribute to these folks, the work that they do. Our plan and inspection services are, our fire engineering are meeting their turnaround times in their inspections about 90% of the time. And our folks are very invested in the community as well. They have a lot of activities that they support and sponsor, both through volunteer times and otherwise. The Philiboot Campaign raised $70,000 this year, rebuilding Nevada. That was an effort by a bunch of our folks who went out and did some work at a home here in Las Vegas this year, volunteer work. Check Your Seats in the Heat Campaign, the Safe Pools Campaign, and then, of course, the Nation of Patriots, which I think Councilmember Anthony participated in last year, and so did the mayor. And that's about to come up again, where we raise some money for some veterans. I just wanted to show what this change in our prehospital care system did kind of graphically. And what I wanted to show you here is, if you go back to the left side of that graph, the top line, the green line, I'm kind of colorblind, but I think that that's green, shows the number of transports that AMR was doing at the time before we made the change. And the red line is what we were doing. So, we were doing about 30 cents before, 30% before that, and they were doing 70%. And in March, you can see that the number of transports became much more consistent. We did about 50% during that time. Our goal was to be conservative, to get the experience, to make sure that we could handle it without impacting the rest of our system. What I'm trying to show with the arrow is, is that because we don't have two ambulances responding to the calls, that that's a resource that's no longer a part of the incident. And so, we have, in order to make sure that we have our rescues and enough people available for the highest priority calls, we've involved some of our non-transport units in responding to some of the lower-level calls that will be transported by AMR. So, our trucks and engines go on those Alpha and Bravo calls. AMR transports those, and then the rest, the rest of the calls we handle with our rescues. And that's just a graphic depiction of that same thing, on the number of transports that we increased and what we expect to do next year. So, here's the outcomes. Our response time remained fairly consistent on medical calls. We keep trying to get it down, and I might mention that we also had, you know, we made that change in terms of how we do our dispatch center protocols, and so, there is some impact on that, but we're seeing our response times come down again. Our fire, our response time in 2014 came down, our transports were up, and our revenues were up. We also made some other changes in our fire deployment system that we think provide a better ability for us to respond to fires, and we had that evaluated by the insurance service offices, who they service offices, who they agreed that the changes we made were an improvement. Later today, you'll hear me talk about the changes that we believe we need to make to the ambulance ordinance. And you have passed two franchise agreements, but you set the maximum at three, and we believe that we'll be bringing another one forward to you sometime later next year, later this year. In terms of our system, I'm really proud of the efforts that our folks, we've been looking for, trying to find ways that we can assist people who really don't need our ambulance service, that we take people to the hospital, find other places where we can connect them with, that they can receive the kinds of services they need. One of our own firefighters, her name's Sarah McCray, offered and assisted in having some legislation passed this year in order for us to be able to do some non-emergency kinds of things to help people with their issues, whether it be substance abuse or homelessness or other kinds of things, so that they don't get into the 911 system, and that'll be better for everybody. She helped get that legislation passed for the entire state of Nevada. We are, as I mentioned, we're doing some deployment changes and some assignment shifts. We had some technology advancements that we've had as a result of this contract that we just signed. Our CAD, our CAD systems will be linked together. We'll know where every, all the resources are and their status. And we actually have started to integrate some peak units, because as I had said before, one of the reasons that we wanted to do fifty percent of the transports is because it's at that point that I felt like we had the resources to be able to do it. As we get above that, we'll need to add some peak hours, either through some BLS units that we might use from time to time, different parts of the day, different days of the week, as well as some peak hour advanced life support units to offset the impacts of the call volume and the intensity in different parts of the city. We are making sure staffing is the number-one priority in the department right now, making sure we have the right number of people certified at the right level and so that we can reduce the number of forced hires we have and people having to work additional hours. And we're working very closely with our, our labor unit, our president and the principal officers, in making all these changes. They've been a great partner and they've been working with us step by step all along to get, make these improvements, and we feel very confident and comfortable that our implementation will be very smooth and it will enhance the services that we provide. That's the information I wanted to share with you. Happy to answer any questions, and as I say, I'm very proud to be a Las Vegas firefighter.
Beautiful work, beautiful report, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, questions from council? Yes, please.
Chief, I don't think this is necessary to convey, but I think on behalf of this entire city council and the mayor, that we can't tell you and your team, the men and women of our department, that is out there every single day, saving lives and making a difference in this community, how much we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
As a Las Vegas together. If you takes that and pass that on to the men and women of our department.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
I think we'd appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Chief, we're so glad you came to.
All right, thank you.
And you do have a great group that's part of your team, fabulous.
Your honor, I can't pass up the opportunity to say thanks again for James Tetley, Fred Fernandez, and Jared Lovett for scraping me up off the ground on May 27th.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here as living proof, thank you.
Through the mayor to Councilman Coven, which one carried your golf clubs?
It took two.
Okay. That was a report, we're going to go on to agenda item 37. Councilman Barlow, are you here? Yes, you are. Report for possible action regarding the authorization of staff to negotiate and purchase real property located in 1417 North Las Vegas Boulevard and 314 Foremaster Lane using redevelopment, nine percent affordable housing, set aside funding, with the amount of one million, fifty thousand dollars plus closing costs, special revenue fund, and this is in Ward 5, as I said, with Councilman Barlow. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Steve Harson, I am the Director of Community Services for the City of Las Vegas. This agenda item is, relates to the property where currently the Shannon West Homeless Youth Center is currently located, but before we get to that, I wanted to give you an overview of some of the homelessness efforts that we are doing with the city and some of the work behind the scenes that leads to why we're doing this acquisition. I hope it goes forward. In January of this year, the city put together the City of Las Vegas Homelessness Advisory Committee. This is a committee that is focusing on homeless issues in the downtown corridor of Hope area and the medical district, complimentary to the regional work. There is a regional board, and our focus is, again, connecting homeless with programs and services. The regional board at this point is really focusing more on federal mandates, regulations, and continuing care funding, but they do complement each other. The City of Las Vegas Advisory Committee meetings have been occurring, again, many meetings have been occurring since January. We are focusing on the orientation of homelessness in Southern Nevada. We have been identifying critical issues for immediate implementation, as well as some long-term planning. We organize these issues into core subject areas, which I will get to in a minute. We identified resources and partnerships that can be created and implemented simultaneously. So things, some things are happening now while other things are going to be happening more in the future. The committee began with twenty-six community stakeholders, quickly expanded to thirty-one because of the interest and the concern by the community. I get more phone calls asking, can I be a part of this? Can I be a part of the discussion? I want to be a part of the solution. That is the nicest, nicest problem to have. Other thirty-one community stakeholders, I think it's very important to point out, it includes private businesses, including Zappos, Fremont Street Experience, the Downtown Business Alliance, it includes homeless advocates, the faith-based community, law enforcement, as well as fire and rescue. I have the state of Nevada representatives, I have banking, I actually have the library district, I have formerly homeless individuals, and I'm sure the list goes on and on. But it gives you an idea of how the community is coming together to be part of the solution. Guiding principles that we are doing with this committee is we're trying to be more effective with the use of city resources. We're trying to address an unmet need. We're trying to address the service-resistant populations, individuals that just do not want assistance or want help at this point. We're trying to reflect best practices of what other cities have done well, and as well as what cities have not done well that we do not want to repeat here, and we're trying to implement a bold visionary and pioneering plan that's going to work for Las Vegas. We've also identified many of the challenges and barriers, so this gives you an idea that we have guiding goals that we're trying to achieve. So everything we're doing is we're trying to address, whether it be requirements to access to shelters, specialized shelters such as for substance abuse or sobriety issues, lack of intermediate housing, which we call temporary housing or permanent supportive housing. We know mental health is an issue, as well as even public education and the best ways to help individuals or the public, how to help and work on ending homelessness. The mission that we are following is we will connect street homelessness and urban core to housing and service that improve safety, health, and wellness for our community. Some of the efforts that I just wanted to highlight and how they've organized is a stakeholder that's focused into five subgroups. One group is focusing on services alone, another group, subgroup is working on housing, another subgroup is working on the accountability and performance measures, funding is a fourth group, and then the public safety as it relates to homelessness and even working on the master plan of the corridor of Hope. I'm just going to go through some of the progress that has occurred while the committee is doing their work. We have, you see a little bit on the side, these are informational help cards. We have fifty-one thousand printed cards on the streets. They are at 7-Elevens, they are at the securities, they're at the casinos, they are at restaurants, they are with our nonprofit homeless providers, shelters, neighborhoods. The mayor has them in her hand. I can get you more.
You want to pass them on down?
As I say, they're flying off my shelf, but that's the reason that we created these. What we found, and I hear over and over again, shelters say, I see them in the hands of homeless people walking through our door. I have heard stories where a homeless individual has handed the card to another homeless individual and got help because of that card. I hear from my outreach team, I get calls every week because of this card. A basic, simple thing, but it went back to making sure people were aware of where to go and what kind of services that they can get. We also, as you recall, we got the funding for West Shelter. That will be opening in August or September, thanks to West Care, who has agreed to do that operations. We are doing more proactive outreach. We have an outreach team specifically focused on Fremont Street. We have another outreach team specifically focused on the corridor of Hope, which is down in Foremaster Main Area, and we're looking at creating more and more other teams because there's many areas in the city that we need to connect and make that face-to-face interaction with, with our homeless population. We're doing a co-check program, again, in partnership with our private sector, with homeless helpers. This is basically the storage of individuals to make appointments. They cannot necessarily take all their personal belongings with them, so they have a place that they can store them, so they can make appointments to get through the program to get off the street and into housing. So this is another one that we piloted, it was very successful, it's going to be a permanent fixture.
Do you have a private, if I might, a private partner in that?
I'm working with homeless helpers, connected with our in stock. So they have a property down on Foremaster that is actually going there. Again, how the community is stepping up to the plate and really helping out.
Innovative, totally innovative, great.
Mailboxes, this is another one that we're doing with homeless helpers. A lot of these people need services or they can't get their benefits because they don't have an address, so he is working out a program where he'll be providing mailboxes for individuals to get, to connect those things, to get them into the services. Homeless Information Management System, this is a thing that was created, or a technology that was created a few years back. We finally got them connected into the city's community courts, DNE, and fire and rescue, so that they too, as they interact with individuals that are homeless, connect them to the services so they don't get lost. Performance contracts is a new model. Again, as we move forward with this, and we're all trying to be accountable for our scarce dollars, that we're, what we're doing works to continue doing it. If the performance doesn't come through, we either stop it or we move to another user. Drop-in Resource Center, again, another partnership with homeless helpers, also have the library district involved with this. This basically would be a drop-in resource center, so homeless individuals can go in if they need to use a computer. Maybe they're doing some job research, maybe they're trying to connect with family. Again, totally public-private partnership, they're willing to be created, the library district is willing to offer the physical pieces, such as computers, any kind of periodicals, tables, things of that nature. They're very much at the table and want to be part of the solution. Housing first, we've all heard about, we're continuing with these programs, we've connected with Help Us Southern Nevada. This is one piece, as many, that helps individuals get into housing, and then we get them the case management. We're also doing a pilot program with community courts, housing and case management, and ASAD, because when they have clients coming through and they're into the programming to resolve their, their issues with the courts, they need housing, they need case management, we're working with a nonprofit, and we picked twenty-four individuals that they're working with. So again, to avoid individuals falling back off or out of the system, and we keep them connected and moving forward. And progress with coordinating outreach, we've actually had meetings where there was no coordination of the different kind of outreach teams. So again, instead of everybody focusing on one area, trying to organize it in a way that we can be effective, whether it be in Circle Park, whether it be Fremont Street, whether it be the corridor of Hope, but we can do those constant outreach teams. And again, Meredith Spurgesworth, Caridad, has been very instrumental in helping getting those created. We've done a couple of educational public service announcements, one on the unintended consequences with street feeding, the other one is how to donate wisely to the homeless effort. Again, thank you to Major Kelly Ponser with Salvation Army, who was the speaker for one, and then the Deacon Tom with Catholic Charities. If you haven't seen them, I'm happy to send you the link, they are on our city's website, they're on social media, they're like twenty-nine second informational, so popular, I have to throw out there and a big kudos to David Riggleman and KCLB. San Diego has asked if we can, if they could get those PSAs, because they were so impressed of how well they were done.
Your honor.
Yes, please.
This particular part of the presentation is really important to us, at least my ward. There are people, feeding folks, and they're, these are well-meaning people, but they're feeding folks in neighborhoods at a time when they should be being fed at other areas where there is designated locations, where they know there's food. You know, it's too bad, because people of goodwill will drop in on a neighborhood and feed, sometimes on a random basis, or sometimes they'll drop off a box of sandwiches, or some, in the case of like food, not bombs, they'll try to go every week at a particular time, but it's, it works exactly the opposite of the way you would think it should work. It hurts the neighborhood, and it doesn't help the people that are there, because food is not their primary problem. Food is not at all their major issue. Yet, you know, and we know that, but people feel like they make themselves feel good by helping somebody else. And I just wish they would find a way to do it in another neighborhood somewhere, in essence. Why bring a problem to a neighborhood? But I don't know how we get the word out to them. I know there was a, some sort of a PSA on that, well, we need more, we need to really drum on that.
Well, the PSA is, and you're exactly right, working through the faith-based community and working with the outreach and education and letting people know, there's ways to do it, it's just there's more effective ways as opposed to just handing out sandwiches on the street. And that's been a big concern of Councilman Barlow, too, just for health reasons, you just never know, so. Quickly, master plan, the corridor of Hope, which we all know is down near the, where, near North Las Vegas, where Las Vegas Boulevard and Owens meet. Again, this is another piece that, to the bigger puzzle, which leads to, I want to show you a map here that gives you an idea. Many of the social services, that is Owens to the north, and that is Las Vegas Boulevard to the far right, tells you where Salvation Army, Catholic Charity, Shade Tree, many, many services that are available. The property that we're looking down at is in your bottom right-hand corner, the Shannon West Homeless Youth Center, it's two parcels. They have long-term plans that they are building a new facility. They will be moving out within about two years. By us having the property, I'm going to skip to this, us acquiring the property allows us the opportunity to program it for other critical services that might be needed. We're not sure exactly what that will be, it gives us time to figure that out, but it could maybe bridge housing, it could be some other things that helps alleviate the homeless problem, especially in the corridor of Hope area. Couple highlights also on the homelessness initiatives in addition to all the city work. I know many of you heard or saw about the mayor's challenge to end veterans homelessness in 2015. This was a great monumental event in June 2nd of this year. We have Labor Secretary Thomas Perez from DC, we had the Housing and Urban Development Secretary Julian Castro, and Veterans Affairs Secretary Robert McDonald all come together, which is pretty much an unprecedented event, traveled to three major cities in the country, Houston, Tucson, and they came to Las Vegas. And then I know the mayor and everybody brought all the other mayors with the city, with all the community stakeholders, and many of the people I just talked to you about, our commitment that we are going to end veterans homelessness in 2015, because she's going to hold me to it, right? Then the other one, I want to do a little shout out to our own Las Vegas Senior Citizens Advisory Board. They too have caught, picked onto the, hooked onto the homeless effort, and they have adopted a program called Depending on You, which helps collect items of personal hygiene that helps a certain population of the homeless. This was a result, I took Meredith to do a presentation with the senior advisory board. We have Mary Ellen here, and they were super awesome, and said, we want to do something, and so they too have stepped to the plate. Again, information, education, getting the word out. If anybody wants to get involved, please call my office. Just so you know, this is not all that we're doing, this is not all the work, and we're by far from done. We're looking at other concepts and other ideas that the committee and stakeholders are discussing, doing an informational kiosk, the Greyhound bus station, doing more public education announcements, doing more proactive outreach in other areas or citywide, increasing transportation services with bus passes. Currently, RTC will provide one-day passes, we'll look at maybe a three-to-five day passes. It's hard to get your appointments done in one day. So these are, public bathrooms is another big concern. I know I'm working with Deacon Tom and Salvation Army and others to figure out how we do a remedy on that one, and we're also going to be identifying additional funding sources. And this will also lead to maybe how we look at our affordable housing stock, how we do funding strategies with our affordable housing, all to make this work, so that everybody deserves a home, and we can get homelessness down to functional zero, if not zero, by the time it's all said and done. And that is a quick, a lot of information, but a quick overview of what we're doing, and this is what helps with this agenda item to keep this moving forward.
Awesome.
And so with that, that's my presentation, I'll answer any questions you might have.
May I have a hard copy, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else, Councilwoman? How about everybody gets a hard copy?
I will make sure.
Could we do that, please?
Yeah.
Any comments, questions? I know we need a motion on this particular agenda item, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Harson, for the detailed briefing and update in regards to the expansion and development of providing for those most in need in our community. So with that, I would like to move to follow your recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions, and congratulate and thank all of the, those that have collaborated and brought additional resources to the table to assist with this very urgent need in our community.
Great report. Okay, there's a motion? Please vote, and please post. Unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Great, great. All right, agenda items thirty-nine, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty have all been abayed to the 5th of August, is that correct? And forty-one's been stricken. So that puts us to agenda item forty-two, which is Board and Commissions for Possible Action Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Quincy Williams Term Expiration, 4/15/2018. Quincy Williams' term expiration, 4/15/2018, who has had to resign. The options are, Councilman Barlow, to appoint a new Ward Five representative. Do you have an appointment, a replacement to name?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to appoint Elizabeth Gebre, who has been a long...
Can you spell her last name, please?
Yes, G-E-B-R-E, Elizabeth Gebre, G-E-B-R-E, longstanding resident in Ward Five, and she is more than elated to serve in this capacity, to remain involved with the community and the city of Las Vegas as a whole, and I look forward to Mrs. Gebre coming on board and getting caught up to speed on this board for the city. Thank you.
That's your motion?
That is my motion.
Thank you, this motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, thank you very much. Agenda Item 43, Recommending Committee Bill Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill Number Z 2015-1. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read? Bless you.
Bless you. Yes, ma'am.
Read.
Okay. Bill Number Z 2015-1, An Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning Map of the City of Las Vegas by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Parcels of Land to Reflect and Formalize Rezoning Applications Previously Approved by the City Council and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you, this motion to approve. Please vote, and please post. You could call it orally, you don't have to run with your bad back.
I like watching him run.
Okay. Oh, you are mean today. Agenda Item, oh, post, please, and that carries, thank you very much. Agenda Item 44, this is Bill Number 2015-23. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Mayor, hello. Bill Number 2015-23, amends the Unified Development Code to update the definition of the term secondhand dealer to be consistent with licensing regulations. Chief Deputy City Attorney Val Steed is going to describe the amendment.
Looking for pages, too many pages.
Yes, this is, this is actually a First Amendment that's already come out of committee, so the proposal is that you vote on the First Amendment at the request of Councilman Coffin. We put together, you'll find it on page two, description of some of the types of collectibles that would not be considered secondhand goods for purposes of the zoning regulation. On lines six through 11, you see that it says the buying and selling of collectibles, including collectibles that consist of phonograph records, other audio recordings, and the equipment necessary to listen to such recordings. Collectibles are qualifying under this Paragraph Four, include any kind of cabinet or similar furniture whose sale would otherwise fall within the definition of secondhand dealer, if and only if that item is used in displaying one or more collectible items and is designed or intended to be sold together with the collectible items for purposes of display. We think that captures the intent that Councilman Coffin had, and recommend approval of the First Amendment.
Thank you very much, Councilman Barlow. This was number 44 with the amendment, as suggested by Councilman Coffin.
Okay, yeah, move for approval, subject to all conditions, First Amendment.
First Amendment, all right. On the Agenda Item 44, motion to approve, please vote, please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 45, Bill Number 2015-28. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Mayor, this repeals obsolete provisions of the Municipal Code relating to building, security, insulation, fallout shelters, mobile home construction, and sign construction.
Thank you very much, Councilman Barlow.
Move for approval.
So motion on Agenda Item 45, please vote, and please post. And that carries. Agenda Item 46, Bill Number 2015-29. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, ma'am.
Please do so.
Mayor, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its terms the subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you, there's a move for approval on 46, please vote, and please post. Motion carries. On Agenda Item 47, Bill Number 2015-30. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its terms the subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve, Agenda Item 47, please vote, please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 48, Bill Number 2015-31. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, an ordinance to extend, extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its terms the subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you, this is a motion to approve, Agenda Item 48, please vote, and please Motion carries. Agenda Item 49, Bill Number 2015-32. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Mayor, Bill Number 2015-32, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its terms the subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve, 49, please vote, and please post. These are all annexation, it looks like, and that motion, Councilman Coffin, there he is. Motion carries. Agenda Item 50, Bill Number 2015-33. I know you'd like to have the bill read.
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Mayor, Bill Number 2015-33, an ordinance to extend, extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its terms the subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you, motion to approve on 50, please vote, and please post. That motion carries. Agenda Item 51, Bill 2015-34. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, Bill Number 2015-34, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its terms the subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve on 52, 51, excuse me, please vote, please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 52, Bill 2015-35. May we have the bill read, please?
Certainly, Mayor. Bill Number 2015-35, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city and to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its terms the subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve on Agenda Item 52, please vote, please post. That motion carries as well. Agenda Item 53, Bill 2015-36. Councilman, would you like the bill read?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, Bill Number 2015-36, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its terms the subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve on Bill Number 53. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 54, this is not an annexation. Bill Number 2015-37. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Bill Number 2015-37, an ordinance to update the city's Title VI ambulance service franchise regulations, to amend definitions and provisions relating to franchisee response requirements, liquidated damages, and inaccument rates a franchisee may charge for the provision of ambulance services, and for other related matters. We've got a First Amendment that was approved, the Recommending Committee, and for information on that, we've got the Fire Chief in attendance.
Welcome back.
Oh, the amendment further clarifies the definition of non-emergency ambulances, and it includes the clarification added to the end of the section, inter-facility ambulance transport services, as defined within the ambulance ordinance.
So that seems all on page six?
Yes.
Of what's been handed down? Okay?
Move for approval, First Amendment.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve, First Amendment. Please vote, and please post.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Agenda Item 55, Bill Number 2015-44, for possible action, acts to specifically designate the service area for the city's municipal sewer system, which I've sponsored, and Councilman Barlow as well. Bill 2015-44 was not heard by our recommending committee, it was referred to the full council to be heard today. So staff...
Thank you, Your Honor, Tom Perrigo, Planning Director, for the record. This bill really simply does three things. One, it establishes our service area to be the same as our city limits, our city boundary. So the service area for our municipal sewer service system will be the city limits. Two, it, even though that's our service area, it says that we will continue to service customers who are outside our service area, who are existing customers that already have sewer. And three, it says that we will not serve new customers outside our service area. We will really focus on serving people who are inside our service area. And that's pretty much what it does.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments? Comments, questions, anyone? No? Okay.
Move for approval.
There's a motion on Agenda Item 55 to approve? Oh, of course, thank you very much, Mr. Steed, we love this. We will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item, since we haven't had one. Anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item, please come forward, state your name for the record. Hearing and seeing none, then we will go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Steed, good...
Move for approval.
Good. There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 55. And did we get it there? It goes, and please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Perrigo and Mr. Cervantes. Okay, Agenda Item, oh, let me go on. Agenda Item 56, correct. Recommending Committee, Bill Eligible for Adoption at Later Meeting. Agenda Items 56 through 60, Bill Number 2015-39 through 2015-43 will be heard at Later Meeting. We will now move on to new bills, and we are going to new bills, starting with 61. Item 61 through 63, 2015-45 through 2015-47 will be heard at Recommending Committee Meeting on Monday, August 1st, 2015. Please read the new bills, attorney. Okay, we're going to have those in a minute. Are you going to be here August 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, please accept my apology.
That's right, all right.
We've got Bill Number 2015-45, annexation number ANX 58985, property location east of Clark County, 215 north and south of West Tropical Parkway, petitioned by D.R. Horton A., predecessor and as its current owners. acreage is 13.56 acres, zoned RD, county zoning, R1, city equivalent, sponsored by Councilman Ross. Mayor pro Thomas. Well, I'm really, I'm really blowing it here today, excuse me.
It's all right.
It's not been a long enough meeting as it is. Really sorry. 2015-45, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its terms the subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Okay.
Bill Number 2015-46, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its terms the subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015-47, an ordinance to repeal code chapters pertaining to pistols and other weapons, so as the court conformed to state law, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. These new bills, 2015-45 through 2015-47, are assigned to councilpersons, men, Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin, and that, as I mentioned, will be Monday, August 1st, 2015, at Recommending Committee. We'll move on to Agenda Item 64. RQR 57983, this is a public hearing, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor Owner Milford Mark and Laurlyn Trust, for possible action, and a request for required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 4169, for an existing 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 1615 North Decatur Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, I declare it open, is the applicant or representative present.
Yes, Your Honor, for the record, Lonnie Jones with Clear Channel Outdoor, 7370 Dean Martin Drive, 89139.
Thank you very much. Mr. Perrigo, any comment here?
Thank you, Your Honor, Tom Perrigo, Planning Director, for the record. Yes, everything's in order, and staff is recommending approval of the three-year required review.
Thank you very much, Councilman Barlow. Oh, anyone else for public hearing? Close the public hearing, Councilman Barlow.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve on Agenda Item 64. Please post. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our Agenda Item Number 65 has been abayed to the 5th of August, so we will now move on to Agenda Item 66, which sets the date of any appeals filed or required public hearings, and instruct the city clerk, the city clerk, to set the public hearing dates and appeals in city planning commission meetings, dangerous building or nuisance litter abeyments, how say you, city clerk. Okay, that's done, and now we are in citizen participation. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of city council, no subject may be acted upon by the city council, unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? John Bear is doing a circuitous route to the podium. I don't think so. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, thank you. Move on to Agenda Item 68, Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action.
At some point, we're going to, you don't need to reopen it, we need a clarification on one of the bills that were eligible for adoption. You can turn it over to me.
I will do that. And we are going to hold off the remarks just for a moment. Our attorney, Val Steed, is so astute today. You had your brilliant juice this morning, I am, you've caught me twice, I think you've caught a couple of other people. Please go ahead, what did we fail to do?
I was looking for a spotlight, but I don't see one out there. I'm just going to go ahead and do it anyway.
Okay, please.
On Bill Number 2015-28, which was one of those eligible for adoption, we had a summary read rather than the title. I don't think we need to reopen the item, but I just wanted to read the title so that it was clear that we had followed the charter. 2015-28, which was already voted on for approval, the title reads, "An Ordinance to Repeal Obsolete Provisions of Municipal Code Relating to Building Security, Insulation, Fallout Shelters, Mobile Home Construction, and Sign Construction, and to Provide for Other Related Matters." Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have that?
On the record.
On the record. Okay, Councilman Barlow, you start today.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with the Summer Food Rocks. Summer school is ending and summer meals are beginning. The United States Department of Agriculture will be hosting summer meals at various schools in your community, and new sites will be added throughout the summer. For more information, please call 886, I'm sorry, 866... For more information, please call eight eight six, I'm sorry, eight six six three hungry. That's eight six six three hungry. Or visit their website at FNS.usda.gov/summerfoodrocks. On July second, Coffee with the Councilmen, please join me for the next Coffee with the Councilmen. On Thursday, July second, from nine AM until ten AM, for coffee and conversation. So please come out to seven fifty-one Rancho Road and Bonanza for Coffee with the Councilmen. Open mic at West Las Vegas Arts Center. Keith Grantley hosts a forum for established poets and open-mic participants, featuring the best local poetry talent from Friday, on Friday evenings. Please call two two nine four eight hundred for more information. July eleventh, Ward Five Summersplash. This is my annual Summersplash taking place, so please join me at Doolittle Community Center, Saturday, July eleventh, from one PM to four PM. The pool is open and free to the entire community. This is to introduce pool safety to the young people in the community. There will be cool summertime treats while supplies last, so grab your family, friends, and neighbors and come on out to join the coolest Summersplash of the year. On July sixteenth through the eighteenth, I will be hosting, along with NBA point guard CJ Watson, our annual Hope, Hoops for Basketball Camp, Hoops for Hope Basketball Camp. So please join me and CJ Watson for Quiet Storm's Annual Basketball Camp at the Doolittle Community Center, taking place July sixteenth through the eighteenth, from nine AM to one PM. The camp is designed to develop and empower youth to eat healthy and to exercise daily. Participants will learn techniques and fundamentals of basketball, and how important life skills are to each individual. This is a free camp to the public, but you are required to register. So please call seven seven eight three three one five. That's seven seven eight three three one five. August twenty-second, Ward Five Back to School Fair. Please keep in mind that we do distribute free backpacks to anyone who shows up. You don't have to be a Ward Five resident, but you must be a student K through twelve. The Ward Five Back to School Fair will take place Saturday, August twenty-second, starting at eight AM to twelve noon. As I mentioned before, grades K through five are welcome to receive backpacks and supplies. There will be hundreds of vendors out with additional school supplies to help families and students return to the schoolhouse with the, all the necessary tools and essentials necessary to be productive in the classroom. So for more information, please visit my website at LasVegasNevada.gov/WardFive for more information, or just call my office direct at two two nine five four four three. And on Tuesday, August fourth, Clark County Government Center Rotunda, please join the Performing and Visual Summer Camp for Kids two thousand and fifteen, starting at one PM. The Performing and Visual Arts Summer Camp will perform Soweto Unchained. This is an awakening the change which highlights the events of nineteen seventy-six U uprising in Soweto, South Africa. So please come out and participate. Sunday, June, okay, this is old. And I guess, Mayor, the final thing I have is, feel free to follow me on Facebook, Twitter, Tumblr, and all of the social media outlets, to include YouTube. And I want to thank you so very much.
Wow, it's a new picture. Very nice.
Yeah, thanks to Dr. Wiggelman and his, his staff.
Boy, boy, can you make us all look so good?
For a wonderful photo, yeah.
Wow.
They clean me up really well. It's amazing what Photoshop does. Yeah.
We're gonna sign up, Dr. Wiggelman.
We're signing up.
Okay, we want to look as good. Photoshop us in. Anyway, we have another correction, for those of you who are still hanging with us in your homes or somewhere watching us. On items sixty-one through sixty-three, bills number two oh one five dash four-five through two oh one five dash four-seven, instead of August first, the recommending committee meeting will be on Monday, July thirteenth, Monday, July thirteenth, not as we said August first, which is what we were told. Thank you. It's all in celebration of our city clerk. What can I tell you? Okay, Councilwoman.
Have any formal activities between now and our next council meeting, but we did want to say a few words about the Fourth of July and some safety tips for animals. Never leave alcoholic drinks unattended where your pets can reach them. They have the potential to poison your pet. Do not apply any sunscreen or insect repellent product to your pet that is not labeled specifically for the use of animals, because the misuse of this type of repellent can lead to neurological problems for your pet. Always keep matches and lighter fluid out of your pet's reach, because they could potentially damage blood cells and result in difficulty in breathing. Do not put glow jewelry on your pets, as lots of children like to do, or allow the pets to play with them, because it can cause excessive drooling and gastrointestinal irritation and, which results in ingestions, ingestions. Keep your candles and insect coils and oil products out of reach, because ingestions can produce stomach irritations. Never use fireworks around pets. They can potentially result in severe burns and/or trauma to the face and paws. And loud crowded fireworks displays are no fun for pets. So keep your little pets or big pets safe from the noise in a quiet, sheltered, escape-proof area at your home. I emphasize that because my brother had an absolutely beautiful pet, who just heard the noise, and they thought he was in a safe place, but he was outside. He ran away, and they don't know where he went. They never got him back. And it's far harder on animals than we think. And remember that the pads of your dog's feet are not any thicker than our feet are. If it feels too hot to walk on your bare feet, then it's probably too hot for your dog, too. So emphasizing that for animals. And now I want to do something unusual, and that is, you know, we have our people who give historical information, right?
Yes.
Lots of times. We have helping children who are lost. We have all these things, and I want to add, because we never recognized Poetry Month, I thought I might, once in a while, add a short poem. So from an eighteenth-century poet, just four lines, "Life is mostly froth and bubbles, but two things stand like stone: kindness in another's troubles and courage in one's own." That's the poem for this month. Unknown, just from the eighteenth century. That's all we know.
Wonderful. Very nice. Okay, Councilwoman Beers, you've had before, I see I passed by here.
How can I get out of following poetry?
You've got your music. You know that.
My dog advised more treats. The Twenty-First Annual Summerlin Council Patriotic Parade is scheduled for the Fourth of July. Starts at nine o'clock, the Escort Division, which will include some members of the city council, and Old Red, the antique fire truck, will kick the thing off at eight-thirty. This starts at the corner of Hill Point and Hill Center in the Trails Village of Summerlin, and will then proceed south towards Village Center Circle, west on Trailway Drive, and end up at Trailway and Spring Gate. It's not very long, but it is very fun. We have traditional floats, Macy-style giant inflatable balloons, military heroes, bands, musical groups, and a variety of children's storybook and cartoon characters. One new entry this year will be the City of Las Vegas's. This is a brand-new Aladdin flying carpet float. I'm told it is something to see. If you'd like to get a sneak preview, go to Pound Sign, discover the fun, or two two nine play, here at the City, seven oh two, two two nine play, or LasVegasParksAndRec.com. Coffee with the Councilmen, next opportunity to bend my ear. If you'd like, come by at the Rampart Lake Mead Starbucks, seven thirty to nine o'clock on Friday, July tenth. That's the Starbucks right by that Bank of America building. Then the next day, on Saturday, July eleventh, from six to nine in the evening, we'll be having another hot tropical night up at the Pavilion Pool, which is located right about halfway between Palo Verde High School and Rogich Middle School. Two two nine fourteen eighty-eight for information. Four-dollar admission, but that does get you dancing to a DJ, swimming, games, activities, and just kind of pooling around.
Pooling around, very good.
Finally, we'll have beers with beers in July, on Wednesday, July twenty-second, five thirty to seven thirty. That will be at The Pint, which is in the Smith Shopping Center near Charleston and Wallopi. The actual address, ninety-nine forty-one West Charleston Boulevard. Hope to see you there. And finally, on this day in musical history, in nineteen seventy-three, in New York City, Jesus Christ Superstar closed after seven hundred and eleven shows on Broadway. Shown here is a poster from that, that Broadway production. Interestingly enough, this was actually conceived as a concept album, double album, recorded with the lead singer of Deep Purple playing the lead role. And that group never performed together, other than recording the record. Later, they came up with the idea of turning it into a Broadway show. And that's all we've got for Ward Two, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I love to see these old posters, Joe. Takes me back. Okay, Mayor Bartham.
And I understand his events are really starting to, a lot of people are enjoying those, from what I'm hearing on the streets, Councilman, so good job.
So you gotta get going.
I'm trying to get going.
You don't have to live in Ward Two.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to make it, actually. Get it on my calendar. This, Mayor, if you remember, a few days ago, you were out at Tulie Springs with Neil Cornsey from the BLM, as he, with the YMCA, with the presentation on getting youth engaged in more outdoor activities. These are the battery-included kids from the City of Las Vegas that I took my picture with, so I'd much like to see that. And that, the only announcement I have, actually, is in our continued partnership with Nevada Childseekers, I have a missing young lady. Her name is Tavia Jennifer Jones. She's fifteen years old, five foot three, a hundred and twenty pounds. She wears glasses and has her ears pierced. She was last seen in the area of North Durango and Washburn. It's not known what she was wearing at the time, but she may be carrying a backpack with personal belongings. She does wear glasses. So anyone having information to the whereabouts of this young lady, please contact the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department at seven zero two eight two eight three one one one, and/or Nevada Childseekers at seven zero two four five eight seven zero zero nine. And let's see if we can get this young lady back to where, back in the hands of folks who want to take care of her. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers.
And I understand both Councilman Coffin and Councilman Anthony had nothing to report. They're all getting ready for Saturday's parade, which is what I'm gonna be doing, too. And our next council meeting is Wednesday, July fifteenth, here in Chambers, nine AM. We thank you all. We thank our staff. We thank our technical crew. And you are getting really sophisticated with what you're doing. You've made Councilwoman and me very jealous. And of course, we have really urged our, head of our Public Information Office, you know, we want to look as good as Councilman Barlow. Please? Anyway, so this meeting is adjourned, and congratulations again to our city clerk, Luanne Holmes. We'll see you tomorrow morning at nine here. We thank everybody, and congratulations also to Bill Art, and thank you, Felicia, for a wonderful job today. It's wonderful to have had you here. You did a great job. And anybody who wants to speak with the Review Journal, be my guest, just step right on up there. You can call in, too. Your cell phone number is, please, Mr. DeHaven? Seven two zero four seven nine two? Four zero nine two. Mr. DeHaven, any comments you have? And if you could just turn around so they could see you from the front?
And delivery issues.
Okay. Any comments? He's, he just loves it. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and thank you always, Diana and Mr. Wiggelman. Thank you.
And Luanne, that was classic. That was classic.